I like to call this mean to order at one fifty. And for those of you who have been patiently waiting since one o'clock, thank you very much for your patience. Our close session ran longer than we initially anticipated and therefore we decided that would be a lot better and friendlier mood if we had a bite to eat before we got back to the afternoon session. So thank you very much for your patience. I read a land acknowledgement this morning, so I'm not going to do it again this afternoon. Other than just briefly say, we want to acknowledge that we're on the lands traditionally occupied with indigenous people. And we absolutely want to show our respect for their care of these lands for eons before we got here. Thank you. Counsel, are there any declarations of a cunior interest or conflicts of interest with regards to our agenda this afternoon? And I understand, oh, we have an option of the agenda. That we should probably do first before we go into the next steps. And move by counselor Cooper saying by counselor Douglas, be resolved, the committee, the whole adopts the agenda of November ninth, twenty twenty one as circulated. All those in favor. And that is carried. And I understand we might have somebody who wants to take advantage of open forum this way.
Um, that is correct. I'm his, I don't know if I'm going to pronounce his last name properly. But Mr. Jeff Kenez and I will bring him over and he can speak for open form. If you'd like to remind him of the rules here worship.
Why don't you remind me of?
Okay. That they have two minutes to speak and council counter cannot respond. That's up to them, but no decisions will be made today.
Fair enough. I see the name Jeff, but I'm not sure I caught the last name.
Uh, Kenez.
Mr. Kenez, welcome.
Well, thank you.
You have two minutes in order to present your case and if counsel has any questions of you following that, they will ask them.
Okay, um, well, then I'll begin.
Please.
Okay, so um, I was, uh, I'm a land, land owner in the township of Georgian Bay, had a cottage there. Since nineteen fifty six, um, long story short, I was um, curious about purchasing the shore road allowance. Um, I made some inquiries, spoke to the township office. Where it came to my attention that the fees for, for the shore road were raised without um, without, without any kind of notification for, with the stakeholders. Which uh, obviously upset me, otherwise I wouldn't be here. In the past, when this was done, um, we were given, I think it was a year and a half or two years to go through the entire process. And make the application prior to the fee being raised. This time around, it would seem that uh, in the span of two and a half months, it was, I guess, passed through council. And put into effect, as I understand it, at the beginning of October. The process began in the middle of July. So from, you know, from beginning to end, it was a two and a half month period. And on according to your documentation, it takes anywhere from three months to twelve months to go through the entire process of purchasing the shore road. I would just like to know why the stakeholders weren't made aware of this. And what can be done about this going forward?
Okay. Um. Duly noted. I don't know if any, if any staff member wants to respond in any way at this point, Ms. Way.
Um, I just high level, I wasn't here when um, the shore road allowance sale process was initiated, was initiated. And I know, I believe part of that came from legislative changes that permitted us to sell. And how we were going to go about that when we took ownership. So that would have been a much lengthier process. The process that took place this time was us just updating the fees and charges schedule and by law, which is a public process. I believe the draft first came forward in August, if my memory is correct. Um, and so we're just simply updating the fees and charges based off of current staff time, the process it takes. The time it takes in order for an application to go through the three to twelve months really has nothing to do with the fees and charges and how long that process takes us to update that by law. The three to twelve months is more so dependent on the individual property, how long it takes to get the survey, if there's any irregular lines that need to be evaluated. Um, if there's other structures within the shore road that may or may not be part of that initial per, or initial like property. So that's where the three to twelve months comes from, and that's from the moment we receive an actual application form. Um, and most people correspond with us prior to receiving that application to understand what the process is. Um, and unfortunately, I believe in this circumstance, we did not hear from Mr. Kenez until after that fees and charges process had taken place. But any application that has been received that day or earlier, or the day before and earlier would have had the prior fees and charges applied with those sale rates and then anything from that date onward. Obviously have the new rate and so we have not received an application yet from Mr. Kenez. Um, and so the new rates would still apply in this circumstance.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions? Counsel, vote check.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think um, perhaps there was some short sightedness. At least that's my belief that there should have been a grace period. When the fees were increased, it would, it would make sense to me that anybody who was planning or, or certainly in the process of getting ready to put in an application would have been taken by surprise by the fee increase. Uh, my understanding, and I can be corrected by our clerk, is that at the time of the application and paying of the fees, the applicant could also explain his situation and ask for a refund of the difference between the two, and then it would be a council decision to, to, to approve that. I would certainly want clarification on that, but I know in order to get anything in the way of a discount or, or refund, it would, it would have to be paid for upfront and then a request for a refund for the difference be, be put in there. Is, am I correct in that, Karen?
So the application fee and the legal fees of, or the legal deposit is paid upfront. The purchase price isn't paid until after council's approval. So if there is an issue with the purchase price, a request could be made at the public meeting or the time that it is heard by council.
Yeah, I was just offering some sort of um, some sort of reprieve here for, for Jeff and maybe that's an option that he could have. Uh, I certainly understand that if you're planning with your family to make a purchase of something and you don't meet it by a certain deadline that you're unaware that it even existed. Um, it's kind of hard to, to, to plan for that. So if that's the case, then I would, I would certainly, Jeff, I would communicate with our staff and just find out what the process is moving forward and perhaps you could ask for a refund of the difference. You know, and perhaps counsel needs to put in a time period to allot this, you know, maybe ninety days from the date of the enactment of the bylaw or something to that concern, but certainly this is probably a one off thing and maybe we could address it that because we are people and, and we do understand.
Well, speak for yourself about being a people. I don't know about the rest of us. Anyway, Ms. Gunby, I see you've uh.
Thank you. It's been so long since we've had anyone sign up for open forum. I'm not even sure if we're following the rules correctly, if we're supposed to be doing any sort of back and forth, but since we are, I'm going to chime in here. Um, the last time they went up from two dollars to four dollars a square meter, I was the clerk then and council chose to do. It was either a three or four month grace period. Uh, so we were definitely overwhelmed with applications because it was based on the application data as the clerk stated. Uh, this time, uh, we did advertise was on our social media. It was on our website. It was in our newsletter that gets released once a month. It was advertised. And I think when the first time that it came to committee the whole for review, that was about three months before it was fully implemented. So there was, there was time for people to review it. If they, if they didn't see it in all the ways that we advertised it, then apologies for that. And it may have even been in the tax bullet. We were updating it. I'm not sure, but it was communicated, but clearly we don't always reach everyone, as is a concern of council and staff, and we're still trying to figure out a way to reach every single person we can. Clearly, um, we did not meet, reach Mr. Kenez.
May I interject?
You may.
Thank you. Uh, so in the past, when you did raise it, I think it was from two dollars to four dollars. I'd be happy to, to buy it at that rate, by the way. There were, you know, lengthy letters sent out with, with the tax papers that we receive. That I recall, my, my only question is, does the committee or does council have an obligation to notify the rate payers of, of an increase? And again, if so, shouldn't, shouldn't we be, you know, made aware? I understand that you posted it on social media. I mean, I, I don't know about you ladies and gentlemen, but I, I'm I'm not big into social media. I, I would have to actually look for, for that in order to be aware that there is any kind of changes. So you know, if, if, if a letter was sent to me saying, oh, we're, you know, we're raising the, the rate on the shore road. Then, you know, obviously if I didn't act on it, as I didn't however many years ago, then that's on me, but it, it's very difficult to find information or, or be aware of information. By looking for it on your own, if you understand what I'm saying.
Okay.
That's my only, yeah, issue.
All right. The, your, your point has definitely been heard by everyone. As, as I think we explained or should have explained before, I mean, we're, we're not going to make a decision on this right now. Uh, we, we certainly made note of what you've had to say.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and, uh, you know, to the best of my knowledge, I presume you've been in touch with staff prior to this. And, and so, you know, I think there, there should have been ways of you to be able to find this information out. Um, but I, as CEO Gunby said, trying to get information out to everybody is absolutely a challenge in, in our township. Especially given the fact that a good percentage of our population are seasonal residents. But thank you very much for your input. It is appreciated.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Um. Next on our list is our asset management plan. And I believe Chris von der Haiden from PSD Citywide is going to make a presentation. Ms. Boot yet, or do you want to do the introduction or you want me to, or should we just let? Have you let him even, have you let him into the room yet?
Through your worship, I was buying time for Chris to join our, our meeting. We've, we have a presentation prepared. Um, it's just a status update. I, I wanted to, you know, put at the forefront that we are doing this to meet benchmarks of the FCM asset management grant as well. So if council is wondering why there has been a few updates to counsel on this matter when we don't have a final document to present. The reason being is that we needed, we need public. We need the draft to be publicly available and the means to get there is posting the draft on the agenda so that we can then tell the funders that yes, our draft is available to the public. So Chris has a short presentation for us today. Um, and keep in mind that as the process continues, there will be more consultation with the senior management team. And I acknowledge that the senior management team uh, got the first draft at the same time as council did, uh, and all the comments that we receive will be taken into consideration. For the second draft and, and from this point on, the, the FCM grant uh, deadline finished October thirty first with a report due at the end of this month. Um, so the rest of the process doesn't have to be as rushed as getting the first draft out. So we can, we could take a second draft. In, in December and possibly a final in January. Or if not, a lot of comments are received, uh, we may pass the final um, in December.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Von der Haiden. Given all this, I, I understand from Ms. Boot yet, it'll be a short presentation. We have a full agenda, so I'm hoping that you, you won't take us through the whatever it is, one hundred and twenty two pages, page by page, please.
No, I will not. Uh, thank you for having me back again. Um, you know, Mr. Mayor and counsel and everyone else in attendance and, you know, I, I've delivered presentations to the group before. I see a couple of new faces for sure in the group, but I'm glad to be back. I'll make this short. Um, I just wanted to note that, you know, obviously there's, there's been some hiccups along the way, getting to the point we are today. And it's staff turnover and other things. And, and there's been a lot of work in the backgrounds that people don't see. And of course, what Julie had mentioned earlier, that um, you know, this, the drafting P was a bit rushed just to get it to meet the FCM requirements, but we've now met those requirements. So that's good. And we'll get into a short presentation on the, on the progress, uh, where we are today and some of the key findings and so on. So just let me share my screen. I'll make sure I'm on the right one. If I go into presenter mode. Uh, I'm assuming everybody is looking at the presentation right now. Julie, can you confirm? Yes. Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I just have to move some screens around so I can see everything. So really this is an update today of where we are in the asset management progress process. And really the, the AMP outlines the state of the existing municipal infrastructure and the township's financial capacity meets sustainability requirements and based on the information and data today. And one thing we have to remember, it's a snapshot in time. Uh, so there's, it's, it's an ongoing process. It's not a once and done. Uh, but where, what we're going to look at briefly today is the asset management plan. We'll look at some key statistics. We'll take a little deeper dive in the AMP findings. We'll look at some of the information and data gaps that still exist. And then what's next on the agenda and then that future ready Georgian Bay Township where we just sort of look at the Oreg requirements coming up in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five and how the township can meet those, those next round of requirements. So if you look at the asset management plan, if we summarize this, you know, if we look at the replacement cost of the asset portfolio and the replacement cost of infrastructure per household, I know there were some comments about the infrastructure per household and it's been amended based on the fifty two hundred households estimated currently today uh, in the municipality and, and just to kind of go back, we look at census tract data from two thousand sixteen. It's the most current data. And in that we look at permanent versus non-permanent, but in Georgian Bay's case, there's many more non-permanent residents or homeowners than there is permanent. So we have to include that in the calculations. Uh, core infrastructure for the most part is accurate data. Uh, meaning there's been a lot of refinement done to the road network and to the storm inventory that was non-existent prior uh, to this exercise, uh, nor non-core assets inaccurate data. And we can explain that a little bit more as we get into the next slide. And you know, currently today it stands is about fifty seven million dollars in your asset portfolio at the township. And it equates to about ten thousand dollars, eleven thousand dollars per household. Uh, the percentage of assets in fair or better condition. Now, if we look at this, it's based, this calculation is based on asset value, our portfolio value. It's not based on asset count. It's based on the total value of an asset portfolio. So when we look at fifty three point eight seven percent in fair or better condition, that means fifty three point eight seven percent of the value of your total portfolio of assets is in that condition. Uh, percentage of assets with assessed condition data to date is only twenty seven percent. And that's because there's been a road, road study completed uh, from street scan in twenty twenty. We're solely relying on age-based condition for non-core assets. Uh, storm assets are relatively new. The, the one kilometer or one point five kilometers that exist. So it's not so much detrimental to have a test condition on those storm assets currently today. Uh, the annual capital infrastructure deficit based on today's number is equates to about one point two million dollars on an annual basis. Core infrastructure, uh, you know, the annual deficits, four hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty one thousand dollars versus the non-core as, and assets annual deficit of seven hundred and forty eight thousand, based on today's information and data. And really, if we look at that ten year timeframe, it's a one, if we, if you're to look at being sustainable. Uh, we're looking at a one point five percent annual tax increase over the next ten years to become fully funded and sustainable. Based on this, this data. Target reinvestment rate versus the actual reinvestment rate. So based on the numbers and the calculations, your actual reinvestment rate today is about three point two seven percent. To meet those sustainability requirements, you're looking at a target reinvestment rate of five point two eight percent. And that equals, you know, two point one percent increase in your annual reinvestment rate. And it equates to about five hundred dollars, five hundred and eight dollars per household is what it equates to when we look at that, that increase. If we look at the asset breakdown, the asset replacement cost in the portfolio, core infrastructure represents only thirty four seven, thirty seven percent of the township's total portfolio value. So unlike other municipalities where core infrastructure will make up seventy to eighty percent of all capital, Georgian Bay is a little bit different. The, the core infrastructure only equals about thirty seven percent of the total value of those assets. And if we look at how those replacement costs are generated, you can start to see there's some gaps in this information. The core infrastructure is mainly based on a cost per unit with some CPI table calculations, so inflationary measures. But non-core assets are solely based off consumer price indexes, inflating historical costs over time to today's present value, which is not the most accurate when we're looking at the historical, uh, the in-service states of some of your assets. AMP findings, when we look at the portfolio can condition twenty seven percent of your assets have assessed condition where seventy, seventy three percent have age-based conditions. So again, not the best information to go on. Now there's some good news to this. Um, when I get back down into the, the, the next slide is coming. Um, if you look at the service life remaining sixty one percent based on the information and data today, and again, it's based off on information and data available. Sixty one percent of all the assets uh, within Georgian Bay Township portfolio will require replacement over the next ten years. Uh, forecasted capital requirements based on this information now. Your annual requirements, we're looking at a, about a three million dollar uh, average annual capital requirements to meet sustainability and those funding needs. And if we look at the visual, the visual is based in ten year blocks. So if you're to look at that over ten years, we're look, you're looking at about thirty million dollars every ten years to meet those average inner requirements based on your structure portfolio and the data available today. And the stack bar graph shows you exactly which asset category uh, equates to what portion of that uh, annual average annual capital requirements. And again, it's a hundred and thirty five year projection is used as this ensures that every asset has gone through one iteration of replacement. So we look at from start to finish when the asset was acquired and put into service. The one that be fully replaced, we have to look at every asset. So that hundred and thirty five uh, year window includes storm sewers that were just, just installed not too long ago that have a life cycle of eighty years plus life cycle events can extend the life of those assets way beyond the estimated useful life. And that's why we do so. Uh, cunning current funding gap is about one point two million dollars annually. The township is committing approximately one point eight four million dollars towards capital projects per year. Given the annual capital requirements of three million, there is currently a funding gap of about one point one six million dollars on an annual basis, based on this information and data. And as you can see in this visual, we can show you what you're currently investing in the gray bars and what our calculations say you should be investing to have a target reinvestment rate to meet the sustainability needs. If we look at the sustainability requires per asset category, Georgian Bay has budgeted annual tax revenues of six point two million dollars. As illustrated in the table, without consideration of any other sources of revenue or cost containment strategies. Full funding would require the following tax change over time. So you can see for each category what that means if we were to break it down by category. And this is where we come up with that nineteen point one percent uh, tax increase to be able to meet those sustainability needs. If we look at the financial strategies that have been developed for Georgian Bay Township and in, in, within that AMP, our recommendations include capturing the previous slides. Tax rate changes now locating them to the infrastructure deficit as outlined in the AMP. So that equates to about a fifteen one percent increase tax increase overall. Uh, this table outlines this concept and presents several options for the township to consider. But once again, our recommendation in a year for, in the, within the financial strategy is that ten year option increase in tax revenues by one point five percent. Each year for the next ten years solely for the purpose of phasing in full funding to the asset categories covered in the, the section of the AMP. Uh, so again, let's go back to the data. So this is a snapshot in time. It's based on the best information and data, data available today. And if we look at the roads, um, you know, current valuation, we need current valuation for all assets. Uh, we do have unit values on your asphalt road specifically. But for township, we use CPI tables as well as, and you know, gravel roads are not included in your AMP because it's not considered capital. It's under your operating budget. Additional asset specific data will then help you improve your asset management processes going forward in the future. So again, like expanding your levels of service KPIs to then define, and we'll talk about these new, the, the next round of Oreg requirements coming up and why this information and data is going to be very important for you to be able to achieve those requirements. Under the storm system, we want to confirm the inventory is complete and accurate. Uh, so it's based on the information of it data today, but we, we also um, you know, analyze the data and there may be some data gaps or maybe some assets that are still not included, but further investigation is being done to verify this. Um, again, current valuation uh, for all assets in the storm system would be required and expanding the levels of service KPIs. Now, this is looking at core infrastructure. This is a pretty good, when this is a pretty good projection, a pretty good report for as far as the inventory and the data goes. When we start looking at your non-core assets. This is where we bring in some more recommendations. So under your facilities is a need for a complete componentized asset registry aligned with industry standards and best practice, practices like uniform at two indexing, which is consumer price indexing for specific facility components. So you can get updated replacement cost on those assets. Also it assists with your operational needs for this data as well. Uh, accurate valuation, everything within your facilities or non-core assets is based off CPI inflationary measures only. Uh, assess condition is very important. It's proven time to time again, the S, assessing, assess condition gives you the, a better projection of what your capital requirements be coming forward in the future. And again, levels of service KPIs and you can see a similar trend for now at Parks Natural Capital Assets. Need a complete and, and uh, complete asset registry, including functional data hierarchy. So there's no consistent data hierarchy today. Um, even though there's a start that meets all departmental needs for in reporting. Accurate valuation data again, assess condition, love as a service KPIs. And again, rolling stock, there's still good information. There's a good inventory. There's a complete inventory for rolling stock and equipment. But we're still missing accurate valuation data, assess condition and levels of service KPIs to meet these next requirements coming forward. So if you look at what's next as far as the AMP process goes, I'm just kind of backing up to what Julie was saying earlier. Uh, we're looking for that red line uh, version of the draft AMP supplied by Georgian Bay Township by November twelfth. That allows art, myself and our staff to then uh, revise the, the draft AMP to then provide a second draft to your senior management team by November eighteenth. Georgian bail then review that with the senior management team and review and discuss the second draft by November twenty third and provide any final feedback. And that allows us uh, to then develop or deliver that final draft with any final revisions by November twenty first or twenty fifth, sorry, which then will set you up in, in good timing to have your final MP for council agenda for November twenty sixth. I do believe, is that correct, Julie? Yes.
That is correct. Uh, so that the November twenty sixth is our internal deadline for reports. But yes, that we, they could be released on time for the December agenda.
Okay, thank you, Julie. So next we want to talk about that future edited, future ready Georgian Bay Township. With regards to the next round of Oreg requirements coming up in twenty two, twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. And if we look at and just kind of review the client status, so Georgia Me Township has an asset management policy in place and met those requirements for twenty nineteen. We've met all the requirements, even though this AMP, you can see in non-core, there's, we're, we're missing information. As far as core infrastructure goes, we've met the requirements for twenty two Oreg requirements. So you've, you've, uh, we've got your current levels of service. Quantified within the report. Inventory analysis is complete, lifestyle activities, sustained levels of service has also been completed for core infrastructure. The cost of those lifecycle activities, the population employment growth and growth forecast are, are within your asset management plan. But if we look forward to the twenty twenty four requirement. But if we look forward to the twenty twenty-four requirements, you have to expand everything from twenty twenty-two. So if we look at the levels of service inventory analysis and so on. Non-core assets are subjected to that same requirement in twenty twenty-four. So that gives Georgian Bay Township two years. To get more information and more data to meet that next round of requirements in twenty twenty-four. And then if we look beyond the twenty twenty-five. In twenty twenty-five, the township has to revise the AMP to include. Or include it within that AMP, the proposed levels of service for the next ten years. So now we know what the current levels of service for all asset categories. The township now has to indicate the proposed level of service they're going to provide over the net next ten years. Uh, updating inventory analysis based on the current information and data that's available at the time. Because every AMP under the Oreg requirements has to be within a two-year window, that data has to be current within two years of the AMP's uh adoption. Um, the final financial uh strategy and addressing shortfalls in that twenty twenty-five AMP. As well as discussion of how growth assumptions. Now, for any municipality under twenty-five thousand populations, it's just discussing and and uh and. And having some assumptions around that. It's not as detailed as anything, any municipality with a population of twenty-five thousand and over. So that was a very short presentation to give you the highlights of your AMP without going through the hundred and the one hundred and twenty-eight pages. Uh, uh, within the document today. Um, at this time, I'll open up the floor to any questions, concerns or uh anything else that anybody want to. Comment on.
Well, thank you. And I'm sure you're working on stopping sharing your screen, so I'll be able to see over his faces.
While Chris is doing that through your worship, uh, I would like to give a comment to Chris. Um, if I may. Chris, thank you so much. And that last slide or before last slide is very depressing. We still have lots of work to come. For the next five years. Um. As for progress internally, um, I think we got the message across that. Asset management is not the responsibility of only finance or only operations. I think the message is now at the senior management team and corporate wide that it's the responsibility of everybody. Uh, we are in the business of offering services and to offer those services, we need the assets. And uh managing those assets properly is going to be beneficial. Uh, internal progress, uh, in addition to our our twenty nineteen asset management policy. Uh, we've created just recently an internal committee of staff um that is led by our C A O. Um, and we would, we had our first meeting, we will continue to have meeting our next ones next week. And um that way we now have more of a corporate wide view on asset management. So we're still at the very debut of this committee, uh, but on the right path to uh the next AMP. I have more involvement from uh a corporate lens.
Yeah, and i- if I could, if I may, um, I'll just add to what Julie had had just mentioned. Um, all the work that's been done within your asset management system now marries to that AMP. So revising your AMP or or creating another iteration of your MP is not going to be as time consuming and resource intensive as this as this AMP. Uh, because all the heavy lifting is done upfront, where we're linking your AMP to your asset management system, which then allows you. To i- it it essentially operationalizes your AMP. Now your AMP is a living, breathing document aligned with your data. So in the future, if the data is in good shape, it's just a matter of updating. All of your graphs and charts to today's current value or today's current state. So again, um, very important piece to that was all of the data and the linking in the background to this AMP. So your next iterations are much easier to to compile and put together than 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 this version that we're working on today.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll just make one comment before passing it over to any counselor. I don't believe we have a resolution that we need to pass with regards to this, so we're just appreciating the update. I was so pleased to see that you now include all households. As a denominator as opposed to just those that had the year-round residents, because it's harder and harder to find who they are anyway. So thank you very much for that change. It makes the whole, uh, you know, average replacement cost per household that are much. Much friendlier figure when it's twenty percent of what you originally quoted. Counsel, any questions, inquiries with regards to this update for Mr. Von De Heiden? Wow. Yeah, shut us down with that report. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. And I'm sure we'll see more um next month. Ms. Booty, yeah, you have a question.
Uh, through your worship, yes, I do. Um, if counsel could provide me comments, uh, as you saw those deadlines are quite tight. Um, this report, some of you have already sent comments through. Thank you very much. But if you could send your comments through to Jessica and she will uh forward them my way, that would be greatly appreciated. Hopefully by end of day on Friday, so I could get all this tallied up and uh sent back to Chris.
Okay, thank you very much.
Unfortunately. Very much. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. H- and I appreciate you uh coming to council and your patience and waiting until we got uh rolling.
Thank you very much. Have yourself a great day.
You as well, thank you. Miss Boot, yeah, I don't believe you're off the hook. Because you're now going to talk talking about um the the budgets.
Yes, through your worship, uh, the next conversation is the budget. So we left off at uh the October. Committee of the whole with a list of items that we had went through with yes, no, maybes of uh out of the box ideas for budget. Um, senior management team has met once more since then, discussed those items. Um, distributed the workload to see which items were uh doable plausible, et cetera. Um, so I would like to state, uh, and also uh finance worked very hard to. Take another deep dive into each line item of the budget. Uh, made adjustments here and there. Um, saved a few thousand dollars. Added a few thousand dollars, found errors in, maybe not errors, it's a budget, it's a working document. But uh adjusted to better reflect the reality of how uh things were changing over time. Um, so we're presenting to you today, counsel, a budget that still has a deficit of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, because none of the items that were maybes um have been included as for sure. So we we are looking today for um more concrete direction. So that we could prepare a budget by law for the December council meeting. So I'm gonna start with um. The items that we have not discussed to date, uh, and these are on page three of the actual report. Um, they're noted at the bottom there, so I will start uh at item twenty-eight. So I again, like we did last time, I'm looking for direction on yes, no, maybe. Um, and this, the the first, the twenty-eighth item would would be the cell. Analyze and sell uh any surplus land. Of course, all surplus land would come to council for approval.
Um, Council Jarvis?
Actually clarification on where we find which uh which of the items in the financial services report uh presented uh we're looking at.
If you're on page one twenty-eight of one sixty-two.
I don't I don't go that way. I'm going through the agenda.
It's the actual report on page three of the report. There's a blue tape, blue and white table.
I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight reports listed here.
The very first one.
Oh, the uh services report.
You want financial services report twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four. Which is agenda item six B.
Also, Jarvis, you muted yourself.
Probably a good thing. Thank you.
Council Cooper, did I see your hand?
I'm equally lost. I don't know where I'm supposed to be. I'm don't go by page hundred and twenty. I'm, I went into the first report that was with this. Is that correct?
That's correct. Page three of four of the very first report.
Three, well, it's this says three of five.
Yeah, three, three and four of five is the chart he's looking at.
Okay, so we're looking at page three and page four.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bottom of page three, the first item is numbered twenty-eight. And it's called sale, sell surplus land. So that would be the sale of surplus land if council would like us to. Dig through what we have as land inventory and and dispose. Some of them may have already been declared surplus and they're ready to be disposed. And some might, um, we might find some pieces of land that uh we could declare surplus and then dispose.
Would be very difficult for us to assess that now without that list. Because I know some pieces of land have been for sale for some time.
I I can't comment on that. I know that I haven't made any efforts on selling surplus land since my arrival here. So I'm not, I'm not sure if these are still publicly advertised somewhere or we're just holding them on the books as available for sale.
Mayor, if I could just jump in here, I thought we discussed at the last meeting. The potential sale of the building in the Honey Heart and Church Bay or adjacent to Church Bay. Was one of the things that we talked about, didn't we?
Mm-hmm. And that's in the resolution. Sorry? That's in the resolution? The park landing?
But it's not on this list. I thought we were talking about what's on the list here.
Through your worship, um, I'm going through new items that uh council and staff identified since the last meeting. I'm not reiterating the same items that we talked about last meeting at this point of of this meeting.
So we'd be looking at new possibilities for a land, but we don't have a list to look at. So unless we know some ourselves, it's kind of difficult.
So it's just to get direction on if council wants us to invest staff time to explore this.
I don't know. Council Douglas, all of my council reinko.
Yeah, I I kind of, I, I think if we've got land to sell and that's going to generate some income for us, I think we sort of need a list to look at. I mean, I I I think it's worth looking at if that's something that would generate a little bit of income for us, but without a list. So yes, to your question, and in my view, yes, we should have a list, should be looked into.
Council Reinko.
Well, they said last time, if we agree to sell this property in Church Bay and Honey Harbor. Um, and it's in the resolution. So if we agree to that, then that changes my mind or what I want to take out or add in. Because that would be more than enough to pay for a deficit and and we can probably put a lot of things back in. So if you make that one decision that taints, you know, it it changes the whole perspective of of going forward. And instead of nitpicking at things, we don't have to anymore. So why do we, why don't we just make a decision on this? And that then sets a tone for the rest of the discussion.
Well, and if and if I can, one step further from that, did not, did we not sell a whole bunch of shore road allowance for about seven hundred thousand dollars? Last year, I'm sorry, this, excuse me, this year. And is that money is in any way been taken into account as you prepared your budget?
Through your worship, uh, that that is correct. We did sell a whole bunch. And it is planned that six hundred thou- uh five hundred thousand uh will be transferred into reserves. Uh, therefore that money is available unless clerk Weha knows something that I might not be aware of on restrictions to use those funds.
Um, your worship, we spoke about this earlier and that money is kind of being held in reserves right now for a potential other matter. That's all I'd like to say about that.
Okay. Counsel Bochek.
Yeah, I'm kind of in line with Counselor Reankle that in in the last meeting, we talked about liquidation of assets or or deeming. Deeming some of our assets surplus and one of the ones was Church Bay. Now, I just remember in the last. Year, we renegotiated the lease on that property. So I would imagine any new ownership or any transfer of that property would have to uphold any existing leases. Which could be problematic. Um. But uh I still think that's our our best outlet, being that we haven't been given any other surplus properties to look at. To this point. Um, so in line with Counselor Douglas's request. I would like to see staff prepare a list of all surplus properties, current and from the past, that could be marketed. Uh, for sale, because you said we do have a number of them. But nobody knows who, what they are or what the cost is, or we've never had any appraisal done on them or anything. So. Uh, just being a s- common sense says, give us a list of the properties and we'll council will review them. And see which ones we want to liquidate.
Dear Gunby.
Thank you, uh, Chair. So we have, I brought forward a report many terms ago with all of our own. Uh, properties and the value of them. And if they wanted to be declared surplus, a couple we sold, some we tried to sell. Turns out there was issues with them. We couldn't sell. Um, at the last meeting, we spoke of declaring the Honey Harbor Park Landing. As surplus, which is the building that uh Council Bocheck is just referring to now. If we did sell it, the lease would be null and void, but that's a whole other issue. And um also the the school property that we purchased, we discussed declaring that surplus as well. So that if those two were approved today, then next month we would bring a report to council declaring those surplus and advertising them for sale. Um, the other properties that we had up for sale, there's a few in Mac here, but are not really. They weren't really that appealable to uh members of the public wanting to purchase them. They are still for sale, but not being advertised, because this was about eight years ago. Uh, we can definitely bring forward an updated list.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, just uh another question?
Yes.
The properties that council approved the sale of on Lone Pine Road. Uh, the commercial industrial properties just to the north of the township building, did that sale go through?
We are still in communications with them. They were sort of trapped overseas because of COVID. Uh, we are trying to resolve that.
So if that resolves, that'll give us the funds we need to balance our budget or or supersede that amount. So maybe we should be pursuing those people to either close the deal or let's, let's um. Squash that deal and move on, because I know there's other parties interested in it.
That is an option.
Thank you.
Counsel Hazleton.
Has some clarity. Uh, we're talking about something to do with the park landing. I had understood it was the building. I'm hearing uh verbiage that it's the the land. Uh, and I'm just given that that Honey Harbor Park Landing seems to be a key focal point within. The hamlet and used by uh, it's it's really a township. Uh, property, and I don't think we want to lose it. Uh, I don't think the building is all that important, but I certainly think the property. Uh, with the parking lot and everything else. So the questions really are, what do we do with the 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 land? What do we do with the parking lot? Um, if people come to the park landing, uh, where do they park if the parking lot goes? Uh, or if it has exclusive use by somebody else, if the building sold, I mean, what what are all these? What are the, what, give us some more details, please, of the things that you are considering. So that it's not a binary situation of sell, but we don't know what it is.
I'm still waiting for the chair, still waiting on letter of opinion for both the property um at, sorry, the building at the park landing. It's the building and the land building sits on. It's not the parking lot.
And what about?
The uh, the school property. So I'm waiting for a letter of opinion, like a letter of value. Um, of the school property with just the building or the entire property, or if it's severed. And as well with the Honey Harbor Park Landing area.
It would have to be severed, and I think uh we've asked opinion from our planner. And he believes with just a very preliminary quick view that there would be no issues on severing it. To sell the land underneath the building. Uh, however, a full planning review would have to be done on our. On this property that it belongs to the township, um, similar to any other uh non-related. Party who'd be uh applying for a severance or consent.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so I think we've set more than satisfied twenty-eight in that council is curious to see a listing of the. Of of the surplus lands that might exist at this time.
Through your worship, if if council is giving the green light on the uh either or or both. Uh, and I'm gonna detail out the Honey Harbor Park Landing building. And or the uh decommissioned Honey Harbor School. Um, council is right, we do have sufficient funds. Council is right, we do have sufficient funds if we include that gain on sale of land in the budget to balance the 2022 budget. Even without a formal opinion.
Counsel Reinko.
Well, how much money are we expecting for that lands on Lone Pine Road? Wouldn't that be enough to cover the, cover the cost? I don't know what we sold that for. But wasn't that two years ago, a year and a half ago that we trying to close this deal? If these people are? Yeah, so as Brian says, there's other people that'll buy the thing quite quickly. So, and it's already been surveyed and all that. So it's just a matter of putting on the market, it'll be, it'll be gone in a month. And I'm sure we get, we'll get more than three hundred thousand for all that property. So that would be my first choice. It's something we've all made, made, made a decision on it. Let's move forward with it and that's it. And then we just keep the, keep everything else.
Counsel Bocheck, followed by Counsel Cooper.
Yeah, I think it's time that, you know, after two years and understanding COVID, but COVID doesn't preclude somebody from closing a real estate deal. It certainly hasn't interfered in anybody else's ability to close a real estate deal. So I, I think that staff should probably, and this isn't, it would have to be a council consent, but I think we just get in touch with these people that offered it and say either either close, finish the transaction or we're going to put it back up for sale because I know that property is of value to quite a few people that are in the area that are looking to purchase it at the, at the price or even more than what was offered. So to me, we need to contact these people and say, look, it's been two years. Either send us a check for the whole thing or this thing is done.
CEO Gunby.
Hi, yes, we're having those conversations now and I actually think they're watching.
Good.
Counsel Cooper.
Well, thank you. And I, I think that would be a great solution. Depending on whether we really ever get paid and I hope we do soon. And I realize that if we put it on the market, it's probably something that could sell. But we're, we're sort of depending on a sale and there's, there's no guarantees. The other thing I would like to say is that in terms of the Honey Harbor, whatever we call it, Park Landing, yeah, the building and the land underneath it, but if we're talking about the parking lot or the docks and any of those areas that our constituents use, I'm not in favor of that. And frankly, I'm not in favor of this juncture, selling the school property either. We, we may have a solid waste issue in Honey Harbor. So I think that would be unwise. Thank you.
All right. There's no question, I'm sure from at least when I'm hearing that members of council have an appetite for selling land to cover the deficit. Whether or not we can achieve that during the coming year, time will tell, but we certainly would be interested in getting an updated list of what surplus lands are available. And staff assessment on those, on the saleability and or, and or, and value of those lands as part of our future deliberations, whether or not they lead to balancing this budget in the next month. Okay, so I'm going to go Ms. Bootyette, followed by Counsel Reinko, followed by Counsel Hazelton.
Through your worship, in order to debate which piece of land at this point, I think there is more than sufficient land to be discussed and to be brought forward in its entirety at first and then in separate detailed pieces subsequently to just state that the budget will be balanced with a gain on sale of land allowance. And therefore, we're not discussing any of the pieces at this point in time or even when we adopt the bylaw next month.
Counsel Reinko, followed by Hazelton, followed by Jarvis.
Yeah, no, I definitely agree that, that we can sell some land to pay out the deficit. And, you know, this particular piece of land on Lone Pine Road, that sounds like the easiest and fastest. But just say we can't sell land and we come next April or May. Well, we just get a bank loan for three hundred thousand and we'll pay it off when we sell a piece of land, you know, like how much would, would, would it cost to borrow three hundred thousand dollars and pay it off? You know, end of next year when we sell the land. So some of the land is important, but the timing may not be all that critical if we just borrow the money type of thing. So, and I think this whole getting rid of some land is the ideal one. And this one on Lone Pine Road seems to be the, my top priority.
Ms. Bootyette.
Through your worship, to continue on Counsel Reinko's thoughts, we do have sufficient working fund reserves to bridge us to sale of land, whether it happens in 2022 or 2023. It's just not best practice to be using working fund reserves to balance the budget. But if we're balancing the budget with a gain on sale of land, whether it happens next year or the year following, that, that would, it, it all makes, it's all in the wash through reserves in the end.
All right, thank you. Counsel Hazelton, followed by Counsel Jarvis, followed by Counsel Cooper.
My questions have been answered by Julie. Thank you very much.
Well done, Ms. Bootyette.
Through your worship, if we could go back on a few items now that we've determined that whatever amount we get to, the current amount being three hundred and eighty-eight will be covered by gain on sale of land. There's a couple of things that we had removed with a maybe, and I would like to re review those items if that's okay through your worship.
Yes, we'll let Councillors Jarvis and Cooper throw in what they wanted to add and then we'll let you lead the discussion again. Counsel Jarvis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate this. Julie, I, we've talked about reserves almost forever and I'm in our budget deliberations, we always have an amount set aside in several different reserves. Is that correct? Like there's, yeah. So that in essence is money that's set aside in case we need it, within the confines of that part of the budget. Like if it's an operational reserve, it's used for operations, right?
Correct.
So it is, it's basically cash on hand for us idiots who can't do accounting that in an emergency for short term, as you have just suggested, can be used, correct?
Correct. And a good example of this use in 2020 would have been when council approved an additional fifty thousand dollars for the library. For example, that would, that came out of the working fund operational reserve.
Right. And of course, the other facet we got to keep in mind is budgets are budgets, they aren't actual. And we always see to the end of the year what actual was relative to our budget. Is it, okay, so I'm trying to think of what I'm getting at here. I'm seeing that we, obviously, if we are looking at our budget as it currently stands without accounting for the land that we might be able to sell, there are operational and working whatever it is, reserves within that budget totaling how much money?
Currently, we have planned to use four hundred and fifty-seven that we will be pulling in reserves in 2022 already, and most of that is from COVID funding that we received that we hadn't budgeted for in 2021.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'll move on to my next point is that even given the fact that we may have this bit of a, we may have a land sale to cover our issue for the current budget, which would be great. We have to all consider a future situation where we don't have these little nest eggs that we can sell off to balance our budget. And we've got to be very, very thoughtful in future deliberations if we choose to go the route we're currently talking about on the, on the, on the current budget. And I think it's really, really important for all of us to consider who's asking for what and why and how we can best, you know, obviously run our, run our budgeting process. Anyway, just an observation on my part. Thank you.
All right, and then Counsel Cooper.
And I'll be, be short. I concur with Counsel Jarvis. There's an issue about selling the farm. So I think we, we need to be careful. But I wanted to also say that we're sort of shooting in the dark here. Did we not have a discussion about the grants and donation requests? So we're right now talking about some asset sales, but but there are other things that we can do and we should still be looking at, I believe. Is that going to be part of this presentation today? Because I certainly hope, I looked at what you presented to us and it's exactly the same thing as came out in, I think in October. Or I'm seeing a whole bunch of dollars in there that I thought we considered pulling out. So could you enlighten me on that, please? Thank you.
Ms. Bootyette.
Through your worship, yes, you're right. It, it looks the same as it did in October because no decision at this table were made. A survey was sent out. And yes, it is on the table, on, on the agenda for discussion today. All of these attachments are to be discussed. And, and guidance be provided to do that. I am not sure, CEO Gunby, if the results of the poll were shared with council.
I am not sure.
But I have them and we can definitely discuss them as we go through each of those items today.
We have not seen them, but I'd like to, when we discuss it, thank you.
Okay, so Counsel Douglas.
Thank you. I just wanted to maybe say that if all of us are in agreement that we are going to look at maybe selling that Honey Harbor building that we just try and get that out of the way because we seem to be all over the place here. But I think most of us have agreed that if that could be severed and save the launch in the parking area and so on, that would be a good contender for sale. Maybe not so much the school. It doesn't sound like everyone's on board with the school. But maybe that's one thing that we could get moving forward with and then get a list of anything else that's coming forward.
I think that's exactly where Ms. Bootyette wanted to go.
Yeah.
Counsel Bocheck, are you also want to halt Ms. Bootyette from going further down the road?
No, I'm just wondering, there was mentioned that there was an opinion of value being tendered right now. Any idea when that opinion of value would be presented?
I've asked numerous times for an update and have not received one, so I may have to go elsewhere to get one.
Thank you.
Ms. Bootyette, please speak before another council puts their hand up.
Okay, through your worship, I'm just making sure that I'm going in the right order. So on the top of that page for a five of the reports, so just a little bit on, at the top of the next page where you were originally looking, those are the items that were maybes and yeses. Um, so all the yellow ones have, had been or are not included in this current deficit of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So if we want to increase the deficit further to re-add any of those items, we could have that conversation.
So if I see four items here, we have removed the OP and ZBA reserve of seventy-three thousand dollars. Then we also have removal of annual CIP initiatives and operational grant reserve of sixty. Remove council initiatives of fifty. Remove council meals for, of two thousand bucks. And I don't, I think two thousand, we weren't too worried about the meals because we're not even sure when we'll next have an opportunity to eat them anyway.
And through your worship, there's one more item that I completely missed to put on this list was the removal of annual fire reserve as well for ten thousand dollars.
All right. So all of these items are actually reserved, are they not?
Uh.
Meals?
And the exception of council initiatives.
Okay, well, that, in a sense, that's a reserve because they were setting aside fifty in case we came up with a brilliant idea during the year.
Correct.
So I consider that a reserve as well. Counsel Hazelton.
Just so we don't lose sight of it, you had items thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, I know what thirty-two is. I don't understand what items thirty and thirty-one are, or even perhaps twenty-nine, and I know we're trying to talk about your maybe items, but are we going to ignore all those other items as well? As a result of things we've already talked about or what, where do all, where does all that fit? Should I be concerned about the fact that we're not talking about those things?
Ms. Bootyette.
Through your worship, I am going with what I feel council wants to talk about. I already have a big hunch that we don't want to talk about the food bank, that we leave things as they are. The failover internet doesn't have an amount. We're still doing research on that and it's really bad practice to discontinue a failover internet. So probably don't want to talk about that. Therefore, there's item thirty, which is detailed in the report. If council wants to talk about that, the item is supplemental tiered medical on water access property. So seems this issue is similar to the issue of it relates to the district. So when we respond to calls and probably fire, fire chief Van Damme could probably speak better about it, but it, it looks like similar to the parking issue on district roads where work bound by user fees set by the district and we're not recovering costs. So we can have a conversation about that. In my opinion, the thing that can be done is more council pressure to the district to review user fees. And that can be done on a side note, not necessarily part of the budget. We don't want to budget for revenues where we can't control who sets the user fee. And then item thirty-three, maybe our clerk would be able to talk about that more since she has the information in relation to a study or a little survey that was done with neighboring municipalities and it relates to council wages.
I'm certainly sorry, I don't have the numbers a hundred percent in front of me, but I can pull those up. But the short version is it appears that we are one of the smaller municipalities in the District of Muskoka and we have the highest paid council. So that could include us potentially saving money by decreasing, I know no one wants to hear that word, or putting a freeze on any future allowances or removing on the IT credit. This dependant gets paid out each year that could also save money. I do have a chart. Sorry, I can't find it offhand, but I do have information with more detail that outlines all of the specific prices that are prices, wages that each municipality gets paid per position, including some of our councillors get paid more than some deputy mayors in larger municipalities. If we want specifics, I can.
Counsel Roach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm certainly in agreement that there should be no increase to councillor pay, especially at these times. We are different than any other municipality and we are not reimbursed for our travel costs or our boats or our gas or our almost have to helicopter into some of these places. So when I look at the reimbursement to councillors, I kind of have my own balance sheet that I keep and as far as I'm concerned, the position of councillor in the township of Georgian Bay is a voluntary position. And that these funds that were awarded or that were given are to be used to offset the costs that we incur. You know, getting in a boat, going up the Severn River and meeting with people and things like that. There's a lot of costs involved in being a councillor in this township. So I agree, there should be no increase to councillor pay, but to decrease it is really we're not getting paid to be a councillor. It's a voluntary position and our costs are offset by this, this amount that we receive. So I think it should be frozen where it is. Thank you.
Counsel Cooper.
I have to say, I completely agree with Counsel Bocheck. It's, I view this as completely voluntary work and a lot of costs associated with it. So, you know, making a comparison with another municipality, there, we're talking apples and oranges. So, thank you.
Counselor Germs.
Yeah, I have to be in agreement as well, especially with the statement, the way we uh we could freeze our uh current salary situation. Maybe that would help a bit on the budget.
All right. We we, there's a definite trend there. Counselor Douglas.
No, I was just gonna say I agree with the other three counselors. I mean, I I don't know if you want to hear from all of us, but um, that's my position. I I totally agree with what they have to say on that.
Okay. Um. Well, let's then go back to Ms. Booty. What what would you like to talk about, Ms. Booty?
I would like to continue the conversation uh about the. Operational reserves that are usually transferred from the tax base to operational reserves. And I'm gonna rename them the OP ZPA reserves, the uh annual CIP and operational grant reserve. The council initiatives and the fire reserve. If we could bring those back on the table as a group or individually. Um, I would like to know if we reinstate those amounts or any other amounts below the proposed amounts.
So if if I understand it correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they all add up to roughly a hundred and ninety thousand dollars or something. So it's roughly half of the deficit we are facing right now.
If we, they're already out, so we would have to add them back in and it would add an additional a hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, all right, understood. I mean, I I I guess from my perspective, whether we set aside reserves and we don't use them. Or we don't set aside reserves and we ended up dipping into it. Who knows what the the next year will come? Um, and um. Yeah, I I. It, to me, it's almost six of one, half dozen of the other. Do we, do we boost a little bit more into reserves and then spend them? Or do we uh not boost reserves? And we may or may not spend them, just like sometimes we have reserves and we don't spend them, so it's. It, it's a tough one here because we're, whether we, whether we put these in or not, it's not affecting anybody's employment. For instance.
Through your worship, it doesn't affect the employment of anybody, but it definitely affects the tax rate.
Yes. Counselor Germs.
Just uh continuing on in that thought, uh, Mr. Mayor, to Julie, um. These reserves were in our budget for twenty-twenty-one, correct?
Not all of them through your worship. The seventy-three thousand of OP and ZBA uh was a new proposition.
So we haven't needed it in the past.
Uh, it's, I don't think we ever considered the big impact of official plan. Uh, of redoing the official plan and the zoning bylaw um as a big one-year cost that we might want to spread over multiple years.
That's a good, good point. Um, okay, keep that thought in mind. Um, if we go down to the CIP initiatives. And operational grant reserve, is that a reserve that was already in place previous years?
There was thirty thousand in the twenty-twenty-one budget and that was the first year for that.
So that money is still there?
At this time, yes.
So we'd be adding to a fund that's already in place. Okay, just, just for my own benefit. Um, and we removed council initiatives last year, didn't we? Did we not?
Uh, we had originally proposed a hundred thousand and we had reduced it by half to fifty thousand.
Is fifty thousand still sitting in that reserve?
No, uh, some was used for the, I'm gonna let CEO Gumbys talk about that. But I could tell you what the initiative was, uh, and I believe that was our core service delivery review.
That's fine, okay. That that takes care of that. Okay, I, I'm just curious to know if some of these reserves are currently in existent to some extent, uh, and thank you.
Ms. Nair, do you want to speak before now you've appeared?
Oh, thank you, worship. I uh, I just wanted to be available if anybody wanted to speak about the community improvement plan, which is that CIP in the budget. We did uh approve that in twenty-twenty. It's a council initiative to support business. Because of COVID and also the timeline that we set this for in twenty-twenty, we have to move this forward to twenty twenty, sorry, twenty-twenty-one. We have to move it into twenty-twenty-two, but this is a, this is a, is where the report speaks to it, a significant project for the municipality. When it comes to assisting residences, businesses, looking at neighborhoods. It's um, it's something that has been missing. Uh, when we did a Main Street grant a few years ago. We realized that we did not have a community improvement plan in place and almost uh jeopardized ourselves from some funding. Uh, but did find a way to uh get involved with uh the Main Street funding because we had done what's called BRNEs. This is the next step. So we have done BRNEs for all of our communities. We've kind of done community master design builds. And now to bring a CIP forward is, is where we should be headed uh to support business, to support our community, our neighborhoods. And uh overall uh impact on, especially related to COVID.
Just just confirming, we we did set aside the reserve for this a year ago.
Yeah.
Did we spend it, any of it?
No, because it was very difficult for us to be able to do this during COVID because it's a very interactive process. So we set it aside to start it in twenty, in August of twenty-twenty-one, and we all know what happened in August of twenty-twenty-one. We were advised of a fantastic grant for the Honeybee Festival and this got pushed uh ahead. Now here we are in a budget process and I, it's unfortunate that this even before you. Um, but we do want to continue with the community improvement plan to be able to work the good work that council has given us direction to do.
Uh, and I just wanted to confirm with Ms. Booty at them, is there some money set aside in one of our reserves at this point for some community initiative programs?
Through your worship, um, the thirty thousand is currently still available in full from twenty-twenty-one. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the efforts that uh will be efforts in the value of dollars that will be spent between now and the end of uh fiscal, which is December thirty-first. Uh, however, anything remaining will be transferred to this reserve. Uh, but this will be the first fund, so anywhere between zero uh zero, if it's all spent, and thirty thousand dollars will be transferred into reserves uh for the use in twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Douglas, follow the counselor, we ain't go.
Thank you. I I I'm just, Jennifer, can you just, something you said sort of triggered with me. If we don't have money put aside in a reserve like this, does that preclude us from certain grants applying for grants for the community?
It it does. It it it, uh, it, yes, in in short, it has. We have found ways to work around it. But we were very fortunate that we did projects like the Business Retention and Expansion Program. We do one for Mac Tier, Honey Harbor, and also for Port Severn. Because we had done those plans, we were able to qualify, but it was very tricky for us to navigate that. When you have a CIP, a community improvement plan, it really puts you in a platform to be able to access. Uh, projects and grants that are available for municipalities who've gone through the guy, uh, the the council endorsed uh process of this. It's part of the provincial policy statement, actually.
Okay, I I just, um, it's just when you worded that, it just made me think exactly what you're explaining to us. If we don't have this program, we may not be able to apply for some certain grants because we're not in the right position.
Right.
Uh, okay, yep, thank you. That makes sense.
Through your worship, Counselor Douglas, we, that's why we brought it forward to you in twenty-twenty to say we are ready as a municipality to be able to. Take the process of creating a community improvement plan and um. So that's that we are still, we still want to do that. We just unfortunately, because of COVID and because of other projects that took priority. It got moved on our work plan, but it was always scheduled to start in August of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rianco, hold the Counselor Germs.
Though I agree, it's always nice to to do these projects and so on, but again, if we sell some property and just say the Honey Harbor situation. We're gonna make well over a million dollars for that building. And so if we get a million dollars plus, um, yeah, then then uh, and and we get the money next year, then we can, then we can come back and and fund these particular projects. Because somebody's got to have to happen to that money besides paying off the, off the uh, the tax uh increase. But yeah, we'll have lots of money to put into these kind of uh smaller, small uh accounts uh next year, so. I would hold off until we sell something and then everybody will be happy.
Counselor Germs.
Yeah, I just wanted to care clarify. I'm sorry, Julie, but I I'm going back to the CIP. We have money in that account now. The account's been set up. Uh, for a sustainability director to have as evidence that we have it in place. If we need more money for that account, but we don't have it in the budget, we could pull from reserves to fulfill the requirements of any provincial uh guidelines. Uh, apropos of that for the, in the future, and say in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, there are other reserves we can pull from to replenish that account, uh, even short term, correct?
Through your worship, if I may, I I don't believe there's any legislative requirement on what amount needs to be in that account. You just need to be able to back up initiatives that are labeled in your, in your community improvement plan.
Right, and I I'm not trying to downplay the plan. I think it's a good idea uh for a sustainability director, just so she knows. Um, but I'm thinking we're trying to make some very severe decisions right now, so let's keep that in mind. Uh, I really would be, I mean, if and I, and if Mr. Rianco, Counselor Rianco can buy that property for a million bucks, I think we should write him a sales ticket right now and get it done. Uh, that'd be nice to happen, hey?
Well, in that case, there would be pecuniary interest on all our transactions because he would have funded our operational budget for the year. I'm just kidding.
And your worship?
Yes.
One thing with the respect to the CIP is we don't need sixty thousand dollars because we have one year where we haven't operated with it. We could start again with thirty thousand dollars and find a reasonable compromise, keep it in the budget at thirty thousand. It's not necessary to add another thirty uh to make a budget of sixty uh in twenty-twenty-two. Because we did really lose a year because of COVID, so a a compromise could be just to keep CIP in there, keep it still as council intended in twenty-twenty. And uh, keep the thirty thousand and don't add another thirty.
All right. Ms. Booty, yeah. What more do you want from us? Because you know, the more, the more you ask, the more often council ankles say, just sell land. Very councilly ankle, but and 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 then what will happen is the rest of council say, yeah, we'll sell a piece of land and we'll be fine.
Through your worship, I I would just like uh for you to get maybe a head nod. So we're doing no operational reserves except for thirty thousand dollars for CIP?
I'd say, I say for now, yes.
But I thought we just heard that we didn't need to do an operation review for CIP this year because we uh didn't spend it from last year, so. Didn't I hear that we can take a pass on it?
I thought I heard thirty instead of sixty.
Yeah, yeah, through your worship, Counselor Hayes, and that's exactly it. We just don't need to add to it. What we should leave it right where it is.
Therefore, we are adding to it. We're at, we're, we're leaving it, we're funding it through the budget. So really, should nothing be spent by the end of twenty-two, we would have sixty.
Ah, okay.
All right. Um. Do you want a resolution from us?
Nope, I'm just looking for guidance. I'm taking notes. Uh, the the final will come in a budget by law next month. And we may tweak, we may tweak some direction at the end of this, but we're not nearly done. I'm sorry.
Um. Chief Undom, you're worried about your ten thousand dollars, aren't you?
No, your worship. I wanted to speak to you was that uh I had a conversation with the District of Muskoka today. Uh, regarding the issues that uh the Director of Finance put forward to use to uh comment to the district. And uh, Mike was told that hopefully the parking bylaw will be fixed um here in the new year shortly. Uh, as for the medical response, they are willing to sit down and have some uh fruitful discussion now that this concern has been brought forward to them. Um, and they uh are looking that they understand that we need to come up with a solution.
So this is good news.
Yes, it was.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Because that could have hopefully be a couple less worries in the future.
Well, we'll see uh as uh Paramedic Chief Williams uh said to us, they understand it and they're going to conduct. Uh, I've been asking for a full review of paramedic services within the township. Uh, so that I could substantiate what services we are providing. Um, and we're, the first uh step uh the district is going to take now by. Um, they're going to provide the statistics for how many times uh they've been into the township. And how many times Simcoe County has been responding in and we're going to uh now be able to sit down and have a. Uh, I'm hoping a very fruitful conversation on uh the service that's provided. And and frankly, to me, uh, is, is the fire service needed to provide some of that service? If if we can identify their shortcomings and hopefully they can pick up those shortcomings and we can uh step back our service level.
Sounds excellent. Thank you very much. All right, counsel, do you think we've done enough? Go at the budget for uh today? And Ms. But it's Booty yet said that she doesn't need a resolution from us. So Counselor Cooper.
Well, it's been most enjoyable, but I did, I did understand that we were going to have a discussion about the grants. Is that not correct?
Ms. Gunby, follow me, Ms. Booty.
I was just gonna say, uh, our Director of Finance said she didn't need a resolution. She's taking notes, but we're not anywhere near being done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you talking about today or forever?
Yeah.
I I mean, today, uh, there are still um five other bullet points on my to discuss list.
So let's do it.
All right. I, I'm not sure if um Mr. Espila is here to. Interject at this point?
Yeah, he's going to speak to the reserve for the zoning and official plan review.
Thank you, CAO Gunby. Uh, so if I, if if I may, through your worship, with respect to the reserves. It, you you may recall, as we've discussed each, with each of the counselors individually, the uh, the various uh. Desires we've had to make policy updates throughout the uh course, course of our discussions to the official plan and to the zoning bylaw. One of the key benefits of to having the reserve for the OPA and for for ZBAs. Is to address these issues and these concerns that you have council have have raised to me. Um, so I I would like to uh raise it to your attention that it 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 is in the municipality's interest to to have funding. Available to address some of these issues in the coming year. Uh, the alternative is on a case-by-case basis to seek council approval for funding to address those policy issues. The, the, the other alternative is, is to wait several more years until we do our next comprehensive official plan review and comprehensive zone law, zoning by law review. And if that is the case, then I know we won't be having the opportunity to fulsomely address the issues that you're raising about concerns. Uh, with existing OP and and zoning by law policies. I'll be happy to take any questions on this from, from you, your worship or council.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cooper.
Oh, thank you, Mayor and Chris. I'm very much in support of keeping these funds available. Um, I would remind myself and hopefully others that uh, there's some really good reasons to be working on this. Uh, including reducing our legal expenses in the, in the future if we have better clarity in our OP and zoning bylaws. And uh, I I'm not sure that they're totally aligned, the one financing of uh legals and and doing this. But I think there, there is uh opportunity for improvement and uh I I'm very much in support of keeping funds available. Thank you.
And I saw a few others nod their heads. Okay, so we have the answer on that. Next.
So through your worship, I'm just reiterating, therefore, we are re. So through your worship, I'm just reiterating, therefore, we are re-adding back seventy-three thousand for the planning reserve, OP and CB reserve, and we are adding thirty thousand back to the CIP.
That's what we've done so far.
Okay, thank you. The next item on my list is community grants. Give me just one moment, Council. I am just taking note on that additional reserve. Okay. I'm gonna go through them one by one. Now we are going to, I'm just gonna name the attachment. It's attachment three, Grants and Donations. So I'm gonna go through each of these one by one, and I'm going to tell you the sum, well, not the sum, the average of council's response to keeping or how much should we fund? So on the Honey Harbor Association, the average of response was zero dollars funding.
Okay.
So if I hear no objection, that is the amount I'm gonna put in the column that says amount per November cow. Gloucester Pools Association, zero dollars.
Okay.
Six Mile Lake Cottage Association, zero dollars.
Okay.
Georgian Bay Biosphere Reserve, an average of six hundred and six thousand, six sixty-seven. Therefore, I need an amount there unless we're just putting the average.
You showed ten to fifteen thousand, twenty, two thousand twenty-one was ten, and included in your draft to fifteen thousand. Am I looking in the right place?
Correct. So when I sent out a survey for council to fill out, I've summed and averaged what the, the council on that line were willing to fund. And the average on that line is not ten, it's not fifteen, it's six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven.
Council Cooper, call the Council Douglas, call the Council Wianco.
I, I would like to see it at ten thousand, which is what we did in two thousand twenty-one. I, I, I know we sort of did an average when you, you know, surveyed the counselors, but it's an organization that's doing a lot of fine work, and I think at ten thousand, that's probably reasonable. So anyway, there we are, my view.
Council Douglas.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just to put it at five thousand, but I'm five or ten thousand. I mean, the, it does do a good job at what it does. I'm, I'm not opposed to either one. But rather than put a nod number in there, either go five or something round figured anyways.
Council Wianco.
Well, I wouldn't mind getting a response to my question from the last time I asked is, is how much are they getting from the Honeybee Festival? I'm a little concerned that the double dipping in our township, they're getting money from the Honeybee Festival, plus they're getting money from the budget. So how much are they getting from the Honeybee Festival? If, if not this year, last year, just give me an idea.
Two, two years ago, it was twenty-five thousand.
And so isn't that enough? I don't know. I, you know, I don't, everybody wants money. They're getting twenty-five thousand. Why would they need another ten or five, you know? I think that's double dipping.
Um, I, I have to be very careful how I speak to this, given the fact that I am a, a member of the Biosphere. But I think we have to distinguish between a fundraising efforts versus a, you know, a township efforts. And, and I use the example of the hospital where people have had golf tournaments that raise money for that. But then the township also gives them some money and, and I'm thinking, you know, I, I just make that observation. Okay, so now, Counselor, Counselor Bocheck, please.
Well, I'm gonna defer to the people in the know, and I know the Biosphere is a great organization. I follow it. Counselor Cooper and, and the mayor know the inter workings and, and how much it costs to run that. And they feel that ten thousand dollars is the amount that should be, should be donated to them, then I will, I will side with that. Thank you.
All right, I, I've heard three tens, one five, and one.
I began.
And. I'm hearing more tens than five or zero.
Perfect. I've noted it down as ten. Georgian Bay Forever, the average came in at twenty.
So if I could speak to this, Mayor?
Yes, please.
So a few of us went back to Mayor Muter to ask her and Dr. Pat Chow Fraser to give us an assessment of what the volunteer efforts were and the value that we're getting for our contribution. And they have provided us a report showing us that we are essentially, I think the number was, we're, we're getting sixty thousand dollars or more in value for the thirty thousand, or was it eighty?
Through your worship, we're talking about the wrong organization.
No. This is Georgia Bay Forever.
Oh, sorry.
Talking about Great Lakes.
Yeah.
Right, sorry. I'm okay with your number. Council Douglas.
No, I was just gonna ask you, if you could repeat what the number was.
Georgian Bay Forever would be twenty thousand.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Six Mile Lake Association would be zero, the average.
Council Jarvis.
Counselor Wianco, that's, Six Mile Lake is part of one of your, your water quality. Is it subject to one of your, your water quality study, correct?
Council Wianco.
Yes, it is, but we want to do, the, the Six Mile Lake wants to do a number of surveys this year on, on water quality work, and it's gonna cost them ten thousand dollars. So they were looking for five thousand from the township to pay for the students to go out and, and do the surveys, a shoreline survey that we would be working with the Muskoka Watershed Council. And they're willing to put in a lot of in-kind work, which could be up to five, five or six thousand dollars themselves. So we've got all these people lined up and all we need is, is, is money. And so this is, this is a kind of a Six Mile Lake District Township Initiative. And I'd like to see that go through. Plus, we want to do a survey of Eurasian Mill foil, which is getting out of hand here. And we're concerned about some of the algae blooms that have been happening in the lake here. We need somebody on top of that. So it was all going to, to the, the entire community. And Six Mile Lake is about fifteen percent of the taxpayers of this township. So it's, it's a large group, so I need to keep it at five thousand dollars. I think they do some good work and we have some significant issues here, and we got some partnerships lined up and so on. And I hate to see it come to not just five thousand dollars.
But wouldn't it be tying into some of the work you're already doing on water quality?
No, this is, it's separate. It's separate from that. I do chemistry, water chemistry and, and bacteria work. That's a separate, that's in the other contract. But this is more or less to do with shoreline survey, which was done about ten, twelve years ago. We want to update that to find out how our shorelines have changed over that period of time. And that'll feed into our planning regulations that we're looking at for our community plans in the coming years and so on. So it is a major initiative, and it would be nice if the township could support us. And I say the district's already gonna do it, but it'll be in-kind work with, with Christie Doyle and Rebecca up at the district. And they're gonna be supplying some staff at, at no cost.
It's something I'd be supporting as well, and by any, in environmental work, we've got to be very, we gotta keep a close eye on.
Council Cooper.
Ditto. I, I support it.
Let, let's leave the five in for now. I get, I'm getting more, I'm getting more head nods. So let's, I think everybody thinks so.
Through your worship, I need to take a, a, a quick step back. I skipped over one. Georgian Bay Forever, Great Lake Plastic Cleanup. So in two thousand twenty, council had a resolution that they said they would support twelve hundred per year till two thousand twenty-five. Do, does council feel that that is included in the twenty twenty, twenty thousand approve, well, approved in principle in the line above, or is it in addition to?
I'm gonna presume it was a commitment we made that was separate from the other commitments. Everybody's nodding their heads, so I think we better leave that in because we made the commitment.
Okay, I've noted five thousand for the Six Mile Lake Cottage Association. And then Magteer Legion, the average came back from council responses at two hundred of the six hundred dollar ask.
We've given them, I think.
It's minor.
You know, but, but we've given them a relatively small amount every year for their, but this outstanding building permits. That's something else than I was thinking of.
Can you explain what that is, Julie?
Sure, through your worship, the Magteer Legion was advised that they needed to connect to the district's water and sewer over time, and they took out a building permit for that. The Magteer Legion, along with all the other legions in the province, are exempt from taxation. However, they're not exempt from other fees and charges. With time, they've accumulated a bill of six hundred dollars of outstanding building permit fees and penalties and interest. The building permit was just recently closed. Therefore, there will not be accumulating any further fees, and they were looking for council relief. I advised them they had two ways to do that. One, they could write a, a request to council to waive the fees in terms of council overriding the user fees and bylaw charges. However, I told them because they were a non-for-profit organization, they could also apply to council for the grant in line with our annual budget process, and therefore that's the avenue they chose.
I'd say let's forgive them the billing fees. I've seen lots of not, head nods. Counselor Bocheck, you, you want to add anything to that?
I, I did, and, and you hit the nail right on the head there, but the two hundred dollars that they're requesting on top of that, I think, is money well spent. We only have one Senatof in this township. We all go up on there, the eleventh. They do great work. It, it's a very nominal amount of, of money and for sure, let's give these people our support. They certainly come to bat for us in, in November for our veterans.
Okay, that's, that's in, please.
The next one is Georgian Bay. I guess GH is General Hospital. Their request was for fifteen. The average came back at three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three.
Which means two, two said yes, one said no.
Somebody's good at math.
Counselor Cooper, call the Council Douglas.
I, I would like to see it at least be at what it was last year at the five thousand, so I certainly wouldn't want to see it lower than that. But maybe we're being careful this year, so I think we need to keep that in mind. So I'd say suggest five thousand.
Council Douglas.
No, I agree. I think five thousand would be appropriate. Keep it, just, we are trying to be cautious this year, but let's try and keep it where it was last year as a donation. Certainly need that hospital.
Council Bocheck.
Yeah, I, I concur. Our tax dollars go to Gravenhurst and Huntsville and Braceville, Breach Bridge for the hospitals. I know this is in Simcoe County. It's not even in our district, but absolutely, we all use that hospital and, and let's fund it.
All right, that five staying in. Libraries.
Okay, we're going, going into another category, which is joint local board, so we do have an obligation to fund these next projects or funding requests. However, the amount can be adjusted by council. So I will start with the library. So the two thousand twenty-one amount approved via budget was a hundred and sixty thousand. Council in-year added another fifty thousand. So that would be two hundred and ten, and their two thousand twenty-two request is in the range of two hundred and forty. And I've requested either the board of the chair or the, the contracted CEO to come talk to you, and they weren't prepared to do so today.
I'd like to hear from Counselor Wianco or Counselor Jarvis and, and Counselor Hazelton, who both sit on that and, and hear their thoughts.
Council Jarvis.
Julie, of the total of two hundred and ten that we set aside with the additional fifty from two thousand and twenty-one, how much of that was actually used?
Most of it. They're probably not gonna land at a big surplus at the end of year. We've been monitoring closely.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave it to Counselor Hazelton from here.
Counselor Hazelton. The baton has been passed. Sorry? I say the baton has been passed.
Thank you, just for my fellow counselors to understand. We've gone through a massive upheaval in the library in the last, well, actually seems for the last three years. But what we realized, we hired a, a new CEO earlier in the year, and we immediately learned that we've gone through many years without cost of living upgrades and income matching, if you will. And so we are, we're way, way behind in, in our competitive pay. And we are in the process of seeking to find a new CEO. And we, we started off with a relatively low number. We have had no interest. The, the, the recent CEO that we had hired and, and who has left was being paid a whole lot more than the previous CEO. But that rate that she was being given is market competitive. And so what we're really seeing here is we have gone through multiple years of no significant increases in library funding requirements. And we are now essentially in a catch-up mode, and I'm confident based on the reviews that I've had with our CAO, sorry, CEO of the library, sorry, board chair of the library. As you probably know, Jessica is the acting CEO, and we have a consultant who's stepped in from the Perry Sound area to help us out. Anyways, all those words to say, I am confident that the numbers that we are seeing here are in line with what they need to be. And we had a board meeting yesterday, and both the, the board chair and the interim, kind of the acting CEO are well aware that they need to come to council and share this. And, and both Stephen and I have offered to assist in that presentation, but we haven't had time to put it together. We're, we're still kind of in scramble mode. Our number one priority is finding a new CEO. I hope that's helpful.
Council Jarvis.
Yeah, I'll just add that we discovered that a lot of the practices that we had in place were not even in line with the Libraries Act. So a lot of the corrections pay-wise had to be done as a result of us complying with the guidelines from, you know, the province in the first place. So as Counselor Hazelton has said there, I, I expect that we will have a presentation forthcoming in December from, from, from the library board, from the library period.
So why don't we leave it at two forty for now, and then we'll see next month what we do with the council vote check.
Off topic here, but a point of order. Planet Hollywood had asked me to vacate my room, so I'm going to be converting over to my hotspot on my cell phone. And the data internationally is very expensive. on my cellphone. And the data internationally is very expensive. So I'm going to shut my video off and continue to vote with my hand as I leave the hotel and continue on my journey here.
You should pay for your room.
But I'll, I'll stay on board here and I will be voting without video.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So let's leave it at 2:40 for now and we'll see next month whether that gets modified.
Through your worship, I'm coming with the budget by law next month. So no more changes. No, I'm just kidding. We could change it by law as amended. No, no, no big deal. And the next one is SSE operating. The ask for 2022 is 80,321. The average of the council responses are 70,000.
And yet, how much choice do we have in this if they're setting the budget, given that our contract? Counselor Yanko.
This particular fund is all or nothing. This is a commitment we have with all the, I think it's like what, six or seven other municipalities. And this is our fair share of that. So we don't have, we're not able to negotiate base cost, which is this is our base cost and we're not, we're not in position to, to negotiate that. If, if, if the mayor wants to go after the other mayors, but if we don't pay a fair share, then everybody else has to pick it up. So it isn't going to work. So it's all or nothing. So I don't think we have a choice here.
And I think we should note that the monitoring costs have been cut in half. And therefore, overall, we'll be paying SSE a little less this year than we did last year. Counselor Cooper.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be okay with leaving it at the 80,000, but I would remind us that it is a big figure. And yes, we are committed, but as I understand it, we are committed unless we give a notification and give two years notification, which allows us to either come up with a new number or dissolve the service. But at the moment, I would hold it at 80,000.
And then we have the Honey Harbor monitoring, 19 last year, 10 this year. Counselor Cooper.
I think given the work that we're getting with the Georgian Bay Great Lakes Foundation, Dr. Pat Chow Fraser, we've got Honey Harbor covered. I don't think we need this service. And it's, and I don't, you know, that's not our base figure. This is an extra service that we acquired two or three or four years ago from SSE and I don't, I don't believe it's needed, but I'd also defer to Counselor Hazelton, who is from Honey Harbor area. Thank you.
Counselor Yanko, you have your hand up.
Yeah, the work that this involves. Massive not doing any of this work. This is, this is, this is completely different. This is algae, algae, water chemistry and algae gathering and so on. And if you read the reports they send us, you're getting about $60,000 worth of work for $10,000. I have no problem in council reviewing the need for this project, but I would, I would, I want all of council to hear a presentation from SSE as to the pros and cons and canceling it. And I would also want to hear from the Honey Harbor Association directly with their feelings on, on canceling a major project in their area. So I don't think individual counselors should make a decision today. If you want to review this number, fine, let's get the SSE in. And I'd like to see a letter from, from the Honey Harbor Association saying, no, we don't need this. Then I'm all on board. But I don't think any individual counselor should be canceling this without a wider review of the study.
Counselor Hazelton.
Sure, I, I don't have a problem with reviewing it. I certainly don't, wouldn't expect anybody in the Honey Harbor Association to be able to offer an opinion on this without, in the absence of understanding what is coming to us from Dr. Patrick Fraser. One of the concerns that seems, seems to keep coming forward here is this monitoring monitors center of the bay water. And there essentially have been almost no change in the results for a couple of decades. And, and what we are, what we and the community and everybody that I speak to, they are every, everyone is hyper-focused on massive algae growth, massive aquatic vegetation growth and understanding what is really going on here. And everybody generally is tired of hearing, well, there's no change. There's no difference. And every year it's all the same. And so I, I think that what we are hearing in, in the kinds of output that we might be able to, or are expecting to get through the work that Mayor Muter and Dr. Patrick Fraser are doing and all the leverage they are getting with their student activities and university level support. I can tell you very easily, if it was my decision, I'd be picking what Dr. Patrick Fraser is doing over this, at least for a couple of years. Maybe we do want to have long-term monitoring, but if the results every year are the same, then maybe we should be doing that research every three to five years. Just to take a pulse on what, on that style of sampling. And then focus our efforts on the nearshore activities, which is where we have all the problems and everybody is complaining about it. And yet we're getting no traction whatsoever from SSE in explaining those issues. And so anyways, that's that's my opinion and my opinion from broad communications in my community. Thank you.
Counselor Douglas.
Thank you. Um, I just, just because I'm just trying to really recall what the mapping looked like that Pat Chow Fraser, Dr. Pat Chow Fraser and Mary Muter did. I think the work they did was fantastic. I, it just seemed to me that it was a lot further north focused than on Honey Harbor. So I, I know the presentation was just made recently. I just don't recall, were they planning on coming down to the Honey Harbor area to do more intensive work there? Because it seemed to me that, I, maybe I'm wrong guys. Maybe you could just refresh my memory because I think what they offered and service-wise is very good, but I don't know that if they're doing the same thing that the SSE is. And of course, overlap is something that we really don't need. I just, it's just, there's a lot of everything going on. So if some of these services were coming a little bit further down to Honey Harbor, I'm sure that the community would appreciate that. It just seemed to me that there was a bit of a gap there. Maybe I'm wrong. You guys could correct me on that.
Counselor Cooper, follow the Counselor Yanko.
Yes, I'd just like to point out that the Georgia Bay Great Lakes Foundation work is, starts at Oak Bay, goes around Potato Island, up to Macy Bay, Brandy's Cove, Church Bay, so many bays in Honey Harbor, the, the, I would be guessing, but somewhere around 10 to 15, maybe even 20 locations in the Honey Harbor area alone, not including what I just mentioned, getting to Honey Harbor. So they go from the very south right up into 12 Mile Bay.
Okay, I appreciate the, the I'm just thinking about the mapping with all her dots on them. And I thought that it was looking like there was more intensive up top, but I'm not in any way, you know, picking one over the other. I just would like to know that Honey Harbor is being covered because there is such substantial you know, intensification of people through there with the Oak Bay and various other. But anyways, thank you for the clarification. It just something that seemed to me it was further.
Again, we can talk about this all night, but I think a review is warranted. I think SSE should be able to explain to us why they think that you continue. And I think Pat Fraser, Pat Chow Fraser should also have an opinion on it too. If she says it's worthwhile doing, fine. If she says it's, if she says her studies are already picking it up, great. That's what I want to hear. Well, let's maybe get those two groups together and give us a presentation. And at the end of it, we'll have sufficient information in which we make a decision. That's what my suggestion was. And who are for $10,000, maybe we can continue this year and maybe do it next year. But the point is, I think we get the expert together, tell us what they think, what they recommend, and then go from there.
So Ms. Booty, I wonder if we can ask SSE to give us a brief explanation of what they're doing for that $10,000.
Uh, yes, we have received all of the extended grant requests and they're all located in the council portal under budget. There's a folder called Budget and 2022. And all of those detailed budget requests are in there.
Okay. So let's, I mean, I'm getting very conscious of time here. Let's leave it at 10 for now. As you say, maybe in December, we'll, we'll review those items again and can make a decision on it, a final decision on it then.
Great. And I believe the SSE SSS project is also similar to operating. It's either in or we discontinue being part of SSE altogether. So I'm leaving it in at 11:479 as requested.
Okay.
The next item are grade eight graduation awards. We don't get any formal requests for the following few. But it seems that money is issued every year because they are a little bit ad hoc and they come in at graduation time for this one.
Depending upon the number of graduates we have, because that definitely varies from year to year. But I really, we're, we're giving $201, $100 awards to grade eight graduates. Which I personally think is a good thing.
Through your worship, I would like, I have a couple of ideas I would like to propose on how to spend this money. So if this money is left in, there will be a subsequent report on, on a couple of ideas, maybe to make the process easier administratively.
Okay. Remembrance Day, Magteer, $50. I think that was ostensibly to buy a wreath. Though the last couple of years, they haven't wanted us to have a wreath. But I, I don't think we should take this out personally. Community events for $1,000. That's the monies we've been giving to various groups for their programs or regatta days or what have you.
The average came in on that at 1,033.
A lot of these programs are beginning back up and running after being down for a year or two. And I think it's really important that we, we continue with that funding.
Counselor Yanko, follow the Counselor Cooper.
Oh, it's got to be at least $4,000 to be fair to everybody. What if you said $1,400? That's not going to go anywhere. That's not going to fund anything. So let's leave it at $4,000. And so everybody has a piece of the pie. But if you go less than $1,000 or $1,000 and give it another damn thing.
Counselor Cooper.
I'd like to see it stay at the $4,000 at the very least. I think it has a maximum of 5,000 or used to have a a maximum of 5,000, depending on who applied for that. But remembering that this is a relatively modest amount of money that we're giving to some pretty big organizations. Cottage associations, community associations around the township. So it's relative to what they deliver. This is pretty small potatoes. So I'd support the 4,000.
Let's leave the fore end. Now we have a bunch of blanks. And the final one. I think we better leave the money in so we can put enough letters in Counselor Yanko's last name.
Through your worship, there's a couple we skipped over. So the next header would be no requests received. That was at the time the report was issued. However, I, I believe that last time I mentioned that 5,000 would be put in for inland lakes, blue water sites and Yanko. Are we all in agreement that this stays in?
Yes.
And also since then, we received a formal request for 2022 funding from the Georgia Bay Great Lakes Foundation for 30,000, which was not included in draft number two.
We certainly have some fans of their programs on council. So I'm thinking that odds are we're going to be voting in favor of that. I've got enough heads and nods that I think that's carried. Heads, I mean, hands and nods. Or is that thumbs?
And through your worship, if it's okay with council. The, instead of talking about the, the very small amounts for staff on every year, we could roll that into the HR budget and therefore it just becomes an automatic rollover to next year. So we don't have to leave it in here at this point in the grants. We would just put it in the HR budget.
That sounds good. We need to show appreciation to our staff, in my opinion. We're very fortunate with the people we have working for us.
Through your, your worship with everything we've adjusted and included, we are at the very same amount that is in the draft. So no change to budget. So we've, we've reduced some and we've included some. So the sum that we're currently sitting at right now is the same as that was included in draft two at 424,771.
What an amazingly balanced council we must have.
Why did we spend so much time on this?
There's a good question.
I think we still need to sell some land though.
So Ms. Booty, is there anything else you need? I want to keep this thing moving because we've already reached four o'clock. We've got to finish this meeting with two more items and get back to our planning council that had a couple stragglers.
Uh, yes, the next item is one-time, first-time projects.
Where are we now?
Attachment four.
Well, we don't have an issue. We don't have an option when it comes to election costs, do we?
Uh, no. And if, if council feels that all, all of those are currently in there, if council has reviewed this and there is no discussion, we could skip to the next item.
Okay.
Or we could stop on a specific item.
I'm not seeing any hands at the moment.
Wait, I'm lying. These are not included. Some of them are. I should have color coded. Yes.
Aaron, when do we have to pass a motion that we're going to keep going until midnight?
Uh, well, we can't go to midnight. So there's that. 4:30. I was hoping we would wrap up this meeting by 4:30. So we would.
Have you seen the next two items? And according to Counselor Hazelton, they're both huge items.
Correct. Yes. So we can go past 4:30. But not past six, like we cannot go past six.
Okay.
Unless we really, really waive our rules of procedure. But I mean, at that point.
Let's keep this moving.
May I ask a question to Clerk Wee? Would council be in favor of maybe a special meeting to wrap up budget?
Well, how much more time do you want?
There's a lot of blank stares there, Julie.
Maybe. Yeah, I would like to discuss this table and then really I'm just looking for guidance on whether we stick to the taxation increase of 6.99.
Well, first of all, let's go through this as quickly as possible. And when you're asked about that 7% tax increase, you know that we're going to say, well, but we won't, won't need it if we sell a bunch of land.
Personally, we'd like to continue going to get through this.
Yeah, let's keep moving.
Okay, so the one-time, first-time project election cost, item one, we don't have a choice. It's already included. Okay, so the one time first time project election cost, item one, we don't have a choice. It's already included.
Okay.
The item two, by law, small equipment is included. It's not, it includes iPad, truck cap, radio. It can be removed.
With respect, all these, some of these items are relatively small. I don't think it's worth our while to debate whether or not we buy a radio.
Okay, then item four is a big one, inspection for wharfs.
What are we, what are we inspecting and why are we spending that much money to inspect them?
Um, these are two federal wharfs. Oh. Mr. Stokash is here to answer that question.
Thank you, worship. These are the two wharfs, one at 12 Mile and one at Miners Bay. They're steel retaining wall. They should be inspected every 10 years or so. I can't find any record of any inspections having been done. If they do fail, it will be quite an issue for the township. They're quite expensive because we need to bring in divers to have them done.
So we really don't have much choice of what you're advising.
I would strongly recommend that we budget for them.
Okay. Counsel Hazleton, you're going to say you're going to volunteer to die?
No, although I could, but my point is, if we haven't inspected them for years, what is the sense of urgency to get them done this year, given that we're in this massive budget crush issue? Which I my gut feel from what I've been hearing is it'll be less, there'll be less pressure in the 2023 budget. Is there a way that we can defer this?
Through the mayor, we've had a settlement in one area of one of the wharfs. That's causing us a little bit of concern. And as a result of that, we did get a quick assessment done to ensure there wasn't anything imminent. But the cause of the settlement is still outstanding and if it is material washing out from beneath the piling, then there's a breach of the piling somewhere.
Why don't we do one this year and one next year?
If that's council's wish, we're happy to do that.
Counsel Douglas.
Uh, just out of curiosity, Brad, which ones which? I don't recall seeing Go Home or Miners look.
Actually, the concrete pad at Miners Bay is built on steel pilings.
Yeah.
And the one at 12 Mile, the old government wharf, that's the one that needs to be done.
Yeah.
Next year.
I, I'm, I guess I think the Go Home one I'm on that all the time. I didn't see, in my opinion, but you know, not that I'm an expert in this, but it looked like it was in reasonably good shape. So if we could do one this year, the one that's failing and one next year, I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, I'm seeing heads nod. Next. Yes, I'm pushing. And boy, that's
I believe.
Mr. Stokash is looking mighty young in that picture that's coming up.
Through your worship, item seven, I I believe you guys approved that yesterday.
I'll take your word for it. My memory's weak.
And um, through your worship, we don't need the capital budget detailed out in its entirety to pass the operating budget next month. So we could have, like we did last year, the operating budget precede the capital budget by a month. And that would give staff as well more time to finish the capital budget in line with the asset management plan that we're hopefully going to get approved in December. So that would give us another month in in order to make sure that all the items in the asset management plan were captured in the capital budget.
That sounds wise, so we, because now we might be spinning our wheels if between now and then you decide you want to change some of the numbers anyway.
Correct, and it doesn't change the taxation, the capital budget, because it's a set rate. And we already determined that we were going to use the 2014 asset management plan for the 2022 capital budgeting year. And then we will, we will discuss jumping to the new asset management plan for the 2023 budget.
Sounds good.
Therefore, the only outstanding item would be the tax rate, which is currently projected at 6.99.
I I'm going to suggest that we wait and see how things follow for next month. But at least we understand at this point that's where we're headed. But I I think, you know, if we by next month, we get a little more confident on the land, we may want to look at reducing that. We'll see. The land sales, Counsel Reinko.
Well, if we could agree to a lower number, like say 4% or 3% or whatever the favor of the day is, then that wouldn't be that 300 and some thousand dollars, would it? If you went down to 4% from 6.9, how much would that be in the way of trying to find money? Is it maybe a little 100,000, but?
Every percent you decrease, so if we're looking right now at append, attachment five, proposed taxation levies. I would strongly recommend against touching the capital levy. We already know that we're underfunding with this amount. Therefore, if you're looking at only the general levy, every percent you decrease of that first number of 6.8, you are losing $45,000 of revenue.
So if you go down to 4,000, I mean, a 4% increase, then we want to find out 150 approximately.
Because we have two levies, it's not that simple. But you would have, you you would have to be talking about the 6.8% levy of the general levy to get that 45,000. Because we don't want, I I strongly recommend against touching the capital levy.
Okay, but you're on top of the overall levy of 6.9. If we went down to 4%, I don't know. I'm just putting a number out there. If anybody can jump in if they wanted less than that. But if you put down a 4%, how much do we have to find from the 6.99?
About 300,000.
Let's all build in.
Yeah, let's sell something.
I told you that was going to be the reaction.
But what percent do we want? What type of percent of tax increase do we want to have? Is 4% too high? Be cut.
Nothing higher than 3.99. Well, it's in other words, you want to, you want to take knock 3% off the increase. You want to go from 7% down to four, if you allow me just to round. And and so that that extra 3% is is going to be, let's see here. $185,000 roughly.
Julie just said it was $300,000.
No, it's not. It's not 45,000 times three. You, it's because the you're not touching the capital levy, so you're taking it entirely out of the general levy. So give me, give me a quick second. I will open a spreadsheet.
But you you're showing us something that's going up $430,000 overall and that represents 7%. So if I take 430 divided by seven times four, I get 245. So, you know, that's what that's the increase on. And so instead of whatever, it works out to roughly 180,000 or something that we need to find. If we knock it down 3% of, you know, so because I know you're taking it all out of the general. So that 100, 180 or whatever it is will come out of the three. I'm in ballparking. You know, I tend to do that.
Yes.
And sometimes I get my decimal in the wrong place and then you correct me.
Yes, so we'd be adding another 180 of current budgeted deficit that we'd have to fund.
Okay, I think there's an appetite. Let's sell land worth $180,000 more. So find that piece of land for three quarters of a million dollars and everything's good. Counsel Reinko's already made an offer on it. Sight unseen.
As is where is. Well, thank you very much, counsel.
Well, thank you. And at this point, do we don't
Thank you.
I don't think we need a resolution because we've given you all sorts of direction.
Yeah, that's, yeah, if that's
Unless unless in his way is wants us to
It's a little bit of a discussion.
Okay, so I mean, I have a nice resolution here, but I'm not sure if it serves any purpose at this point.
Maybe just that we're directed to draft the 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 operating budget by law for next meeting. That way there's clear direction that we are, next time we're talking about this, it's not at the committee of the whole, but rather at council for a decision.
So be it resolved, the committee of the whole receives the 2020 operating capital budget draft number two. And that the staff be directed to bring a draft three budget for review to council in December. Moved by Counsel Douglas, seconded by Counsel Hazleton. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Counsel Bocheck. We see your hand. Okay.
Kirish, can we have a motion to extend, please?
Okay. Yes, you did. I'll say, moved by Clerk Way, seconded by CEO Gunby. I guess I'm not allowed to do that, am I? Moved by Counsel Reinko, seconded by Counsel Jarvis, be it resolved that committee of the whole waives the rules of procedure to extend the meeting past 4:30 PM and but no later than 6:00 PM. All those in favor? And that is carried. And now we're going to talk about dark sky bylaw review. And the answer is, we want fewer lights. Any any further discussion? Okay, I thought so. Mr. Avery, they want more than just my one liner.
Good afternoon, members. Counsel, yes, go ahead, Mr. Cooper, sorry.
Sorry, Mayor, I just wanted to make a suggestion with respect to these next two items. They're they're both extremely important and you know, they're at the end of the day where we're getting tired. So I'm I'm wondering if it would make some sense to figure out how to deal with some of this, but not necessarily all of it and and extend one of the, maybe one of the matters into December. I don't know, but I just, I'd hate to rush this through and or or we're still have so many people cranky that we don't get anywhere. So just a suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Reinko and CEO Gunby after.
Yeah, I I think we have enough comments from some of the public that they should be reviewed and brought back to another meeting in December. So I guess we can, we can debate this all day, but but there was a whole bunch of letters out there, some of them very similar, of course. But there are some concerns, especially in the Honey Harbor area, so maybe they could be incorporated into revisions and come back next month for both issues. That way we
Thanks, through your chair. I definitely agree with what both the members have said. With the dark sky lighting and the noise by law, I know it is, you know, almost mid-November. I don't think too many people are boating at night. And I think construction season is probably winding down. So I don't know if dark skylighting and noise are very time sensitive right now to deal with. And I do agree that we could, staff can take the comments received on both. As Counsel Reinko stated, there are many comments have been brought forward and bring something back in December.
Okay, if we take that approach, which I think is a reasonable approach, why don't we allow each counselor to make a very brief statement to add to all the comments that you've received by all the correspondence we've received? So that at least staff understands the flavor of our thoughts. And I also see that we have Ms. Prasad there, who probably wants to say a thing or two. So I think we should allow you to make some brief comments, if you don't mind, because it's your report after all in dark sky. Or is it Mr. Avery's report? I don't know.
It is, man, and I believe Darcy's speaking there, but it sounds like she's probably having some technical difficulties. The report was brought forward by both myself and Darcy and a part of without going into a presentation, the other part of, the first part of my presentation was to introduce Darcy Prasad as the new member of the planning department.
Welcome.
So I will introduce Darcy. It sounds like she's having some technical difficulties there. We've all faced that with onboarding on on some of the computer challenges. But yeah, I guess to to concur, Darcy and myself did present this report. And I'm welcome to some comments here from members of council regarding the dark sky.
I was, I was going to assist Darcy in troubleshooting her headphones, but it looks like she's got it.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you so much.
Well, welcome to the township.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
I I think, I think what we can do now is that each counselor, give yourself a couple of minutes to say what you believe. So that at least these staff understand the flavor and then let them come back next month, then we can discuss this at a little more length. Plus, it'll give our residents a little more time to add some additional comments if they're so inclined. Counsel Hazleton, go first, please, followed by Counsel Jarvis, followed by Counsel Reinko.
So, welcome, Darcy, and thank you, Darcy and Cody, for your report. I would like to just make a general comment, and that is there's been a huge concern about light pollution, et cetera, in the Honey Harbor area. You have seen a huge flock of comments coming in from the community. What I'd like to point out is often we get comments from the community that are really complaints. But what I think you're seeing in the letters that have come in from the community is that they are basically saying, you're on the right track, keep going, keep doing the, keep kind of pursuing the the avenues that you appear to be doing in your in your resolution. And come back with a dark sky bylaw that has teeth. And then we hope you'll be prepared to enforce it. And that's, I mean, I think that's an incredibly positive community response, saying you're doing the right thing, but please keep going full steam ahead as opposed to complaining. So I fully endorse that and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Counsel Jarvis.
Yeah, I'm sort of in the same vein, Cody and 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 Darcy in that. I think the best thing is for you guys to to come back to us with something that you know is is something you can enforce. Is takes care of the concerns that you have been seeing from the community and from us, because I'm in total agreement. The light, dark, dark sky thing is a big issue, even worse so, and well, no, it's not worse, so just as much on the lake as it is anywhere else. And that one might be a little bit easier to contend with. By the way, I think any grandfathering should be totally removed. I don't know what our, how many legs we have to stand on with that. But grandfathering makes no sense to me on the on the on the light pollution. With regards to noise, that's going to, I think, prove to be a little bit more tricky for you.
That's another topic. We're just doing light now.
Do what you're doing. It's good.
Okay, Counsel Reinko, followed by Counsel Bocheck.
Yeah, when it comes to, and it's same thing with the noise, but also comes to light, it could be community lighting plans. Like, why shouldn't Honey Harbor have a separate lighting plant? Because they are, I wouldn't say congested, but a little more packed in than, say, a six mile lake or or one of the inland lakes. So you could have site specific or community light plan. So that's something that you may want to to look at. One issue that I want you to look at too is these solar lights on docks. A number of residents, even from my cottage, I've gone home for the winter. But the solar lights on the dock and they're going to be on all winter. But the solar lights on the dock, and they're going to be on all winter long. So when I look out from my place in the middle of the night, all I see is solar lights on these docks and so on. So yes, I can see in the summertime, you know, May to October, they're there to navigate people into the docks or the shore, whatever, yes. But these things shouldn't be out there all winter long. So I like to see something on shoreline solar lights or whatever, especially in the off season and so on. So but on the inland lakes is probably not a big issue because we are spread out a little bit. But navigation and with the solar lights and so on become problematic, too.
Thank you, Counsel Bocheck, all the Counsel Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I agree with all the comments I've heard previous to this. But I would like to see an education program on the dark sky policy. There's so many things that can be done. And and also, if we work together with the O P P, I mean, O P P has said, you know, the best way to protect against break-ins in the winter is to have your place lit up. But you know, having your lights on a motion activation, so when somebody is moving around your home in the middle of winter, the lights are going to come on, but they're going to go off when the movement stops. Things like putting black tape over the sensor on your dock lights for the winter so that they can't charge and then peel it off in the springtime. So I'd like to see some sort of education to go along with this, too. Because I think a lot can be done by informing people and they'll comply. I'm not a big fan of laws and bylaws where, you know, you're held to a certain scrutiny. And certainly gives your neighbor that hates your guts away to to complain and 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 get you a ticket or make you change your ways. So education is is key in cottage country. Most people, when they hear that they're doing something wrong, will comply. So I'd like to see a hybrid of both. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Cooper, followed by Counsel Douglas.
I certainly agree with what's been said so far. Also, I'll be very brief. I I think we and you've covered some of this, but navigation is an issue at night and light around that. So there's been some pretty serious lighting go on in Georgian Bay where it's you see lights for miles and it blinds you. So it's it's really important to keep that in mind. And the other thing that is sort of related to noise by law, which I'm going to be talking about in a few minutes, but it is related, and that is fireworks. There's light that is in fireworks as well. So it's not just the noise, but it's the the light that comes with those. And I I certainly hope that if we deal with the the noise issue around fireworks, it may help us on the nights night light or night sky issue as well. So just a just a sort of an additional point I'd like to make as far as sort of lights on docks. I think they're definitely important to have from a navigational perspective. And I don't know about other places, but usually on Georgian Bay, a lot of the floating docks, for example, are moved into safe locations where they wouldn't be impacting others. In other words, they're moved, in my case, behind my island. So even with the solar lights on, nobody can see them. So just a comment there. Thank you.
Also, Douglas.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome, Darcy and Cody and Darcy. Thanks for your report. And yes, a lot of things have been said that I agree with. I'd like to see just expanding a little bit further with Counsel Bocheck's suggestion on education as something sent to the cottage associations to distribute to their membership. The dock, listen, any any light that's that's out there that's glaring across the water for people driving at night, I mean, as a commercial seafarer, I can tell you that is extremely difficult if you're trying to navigate with regulations on, you know, lighting and so on out there. And you've got other lights that are distracting. So maybe on the on the smaller lakes, it's not as big a problem because we don't seem to have proper navigation boys anyways. Um, but it is a problem to to have so many lights that are strung up like these string lights from Costco. They just seem to be lighting up everybody's yards. And it is, I find it really distracting, to be honest with you. And I think it's not a nice thing to have to live with. And certainly in the wintertime when nobody's up there. I live on this lake, and all I see is like glaring solar lights. So I, for one, would like to see the tape go over the the sensors. And that is an education thing, I'm sure. But those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I also, I mean, I'm hearing a great consistency among councils. You know the direction we want to go with this. I think education is a key point. I would love to see a little insert go into the tax bill that was sent out next winter. Because I think that's the way we're going to reach most of the residents is through some insert in the in the tax bill. I I have a few concerns. One is the navigation. I think some will, I can't believe the lights that some people put outside. And, you know, it's not just that it's glaring in your eye, but it's the fact that you you're passing a cottage with a really bright light because they're lighting up the tree for some reason at midnight. And it affects your eyesight. So then when you go past that, you're you're in that much greater danger because you can't see things in in front of you, including that idiot who hasn't put their lights on their boat. And so I think it's it's very important that we we to consider navigation. I also think it's very important to consider the wildlife and and how much the lighting can confuse them and disorient them. And you may have bought a beautiful cottage, but I don't need to see it lit up from a mile away every single brick that you have on that cottage. I think that's so unnecessary. And I don't understand why you have to put a hundred solar lights out on to light up your path when a flashlight would be a hell of a lot cheaper. Or at the very least, put them on motion detectors, please. Anyway, I don't want to rant any further, but I I I think you're going in the right direction. I think we would love to have clear cut rules. I also agree, just because a light existed 20 years ago, doesn't mean it should be allowed to continue to exist if it's blinding people. And if you're having a party, put your party lights on. But when you're not having a party, turn them off.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one comment, please?
Well, all right, because you're, you know, across the border, we have to make allowances.
I would just like to to say, first of all, hello, Darcy. And can we make a distinction here? Or can we look at making a distinction here between waterfront properties and inland properties? Because a guy in downtown Mac Tier, his lighting issues are quite a bit different than a person who's on a on a waterway. And the issues are different. So if we could just look into the distinction between the two and see if there's any way that we can address that, that would be something I would appreciate.
Yeah, because we don't want to get to the point we had to turn all our streetlights off.
Yeah, and the gas stations turn off their lights for their pumps and everything. So, yeah, let's let's kind of look at it if we can make a distinction between the two.
All right, Counsel, thank you very much. And and I will say to Darcy and Avery, sorry, Cody. Thank you very much for all the work you've done on this. And we we look forward to your updated report. And, you know, we had three options to pick in our resolution if we've gone that far. And you know which one we would have picked, the one that said, let's do some more. Dr. Estella, you want to add to the conversation?
Thank you, your worship. I would like to add a a comment. So some of the comments that council has made regarding this report are are relevant. You're going to hear a lot of this from me in future meetings. There there's a strategic direction that council can can choose to go that would be of help. And that is through policy amendments in our official plan to be more specific about the types of lighting fixtures that we would like to have in developments, be it across the entire municipality or as Counsel Counsel Bocheck indicated, in certain parts of the municipality. It's one example of the policy tools that we can create. So I want counsel to keep that in mind. And I'm going to continue to urge you to look at matters like this strategically. And I'll be happy to provide my professional advice on how to best proceed as a municipality on issues like this.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. And now we're going to flip over to the noise by law. And I think I'd like to do the same sort of approach, if I could, is to perhaps from Miss King, get a very quick overview. And then we'll solicit a couple of opinion from council and then have this keep moving forward. Chief, are you subbing for Ms. King? Because I don't see her anymore.
Yeah, miss, childcare duties, when they call, they must run, I guess. I'm glad I'm past those days. So I promised her I would take notes with this and try to answer any issues that we may have. I know that the last little while, we have received a few comments from from some rape pairs. I do think that we are, if we want to change the by the existing by law dramatically, I think we're going to have to do a public comment and and try to get some more feedback. Because we've we've gone from in 2018 that we they wanted certain things, and now you're getting the other side of it. So there's a, we've got to find that happy median or or if counsel wishes to give that direction and capabilities for enforcement. So I'll take your comments and we'll move on from there.
Sounds good. Counsel Hazleton. Followed by Douglas, followed by Wayne.
Thank you, Mayor. I I I'd like to start off and highlight something that previous conversation I had with another counselor prior to the meeting, who said, well, you have problems in Honey Harbor, but we don't have these problems outside of Honey Harbor. Maybe there's a density issue in Honey Harbor. Maybe there's a commercial element in Honey Harbor. Maybe there are some things in Honey Harbor that need to be paid attention to that are different than those in other areas. And I agree. And I think that when we look at certainly, if Cody and Darcy, you're still here. You know, the the dark sky lighting thing may be something that is different in the hamlet, if you will, the hamlet definition of Honey Harbor, certainly from a noise standpoint. The you don't have contractors up the shore in Cog machine and Go Home Bay and elsewhere. And I I would guess generally on Go Home Lake and and Six Mile Lake, you don't have contractors intermixed with residents. And in fairness, the residents were there first, and the contractors have grown and billowed in size beyond all proportion. And now the the ability for people to enjoy their cottage environment is challenged. You've heard that even from one of the contractors, so a family, one of the contractors. So those are kind of some beginning comments if I I I think I I'm certainly not adverse to a broader perspective. But hopefully, what you have seen in the communications that have come in is that the those who are concerned about noise don't feel that the noise by by law even remotely reflects the interests of the community. Sadly, the the report that was created chose to compare our township to a couple of neighboring townships, when in fact, we are very different. We are a we are much more like a grand bend, a calling wood of a Sega beach than we are tiny township or T township or other places. And so I think if we look at some of the data that has been provided here, the the opportunities to craft a made in Georgian Bay by law to suit the community of Georgian Bay and recognizing that maybe much tighter constraints or much more words in the constraints are needed in this hamlet area of Honey Harbor as opposed to other areas. Maybe that's what is needed. And maybe we need to not look at the township broadly as the area of concern. But almost every one of the noise complaints that you have seen, sorry, letters, emails respect or reflecting this noise by law consideration have all been from the hamlet area of Honey Harbor. And and so I I think what we need to understand here is there is a serious problem. The fact that staff don't record a lot of noise complaints is a function of the current noise by law. So if if I want to complain and somebody says, well, you know, your neighbor can make as much noise or your contractor around the corner can make as much noise as they want between seven A M. and eleven P M. any day of the week, then you're going to say, well, why am I wasting my time complaining? That doesn't mean there aren't a ton of complaints out there. So I think the first thing we need to understand is there is a serious problem. We need to find a way to deal with this problem. And this problem may not be a township wide problem, but it guaranteed is a hamlet of Honey Harbor problem. And I would really hope that staff can consider that. And I would volunteer to help out and be a sounding board if that's a role that I was allowed to play. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Counsel Douglas, followed by Counsel Reankle at this point.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, great. So hopefully, when we take a look at a few issues that are coming to council at some point in regards to long term rentals and so on, that'll take care of some of the noise. I think that most of those noises are coming from rental properties and that I'm aware of anyways. Or not, that's in the broad sense. As far as contractors go, I think it probably is an area issue. I don't believe we have too many complaints up from this area on the lakes, only because contractors usually work Monday to Friday. What I do hear a lot of complaints of on in my particular area is work going on on Sundays with leaf blowing and crazy things that are going on. But we have to also consider, you know, for some of the the or, you know, you will probably in the bylaws have to consider this is that some of the property owners are only here on the weekend. So if they're renovating their cottage, and let's face it, all of us have renovated our cottages, or most of us have had some work done. They've only got two days to do it. So we have to find a balance, you know, of how we're going to do that. But I I personally, unless you've got a problem, you know, in some of the more density areas, as as Counsel Hazleton is referring to. I I'm not so sure that it is weekends, weekdays, or are they working after seven o'clock or whatever the time limit is? So I don't know. I think the whole thing just needs to be really looked at at a common sense level because we have more people coming up to this area, more people want to live up in this area, which means everything's going to increase contracting, noise from people, dogs barking. And I mean, I I think we just have to look at the big picture here. We aren't the same township we were five years ago, for sure. So that's my comments on that. And I do think it's area based.
Thank you. Counsel Reankle.
Well, I totally support Counsel Hazleton and his issues in in Honey Harbor. And it may actually require a community meeting of some sort. I don't know if you can do it in the middle of winter time, but maybe in the spring or summer, get the community together, come up with a community plan for for noise and so on. So anything you can do to improve the situation, Honey Harbor is is a great idea. I want to have a suggest a radical suggestion, which is catching catching coming in other parts of the of the of the country right now, is the idea of of banning certain gas powered machines or whatever that people use, like snow, like like lawn mowers, leaf blowers, maybe even chainsaws. Say by nine twenty thirty, is that something that council be brought a resolution to council saying by twenty thirty, all gas powered? What do you want to call it? Garden, garden tools or whatever be banned in our township by by that? Would anybody be interested in that? Because I can think of motion. I don't think it needs to be put in a noise by law. But boy, we, you know, they already have leaf blowers that are battery powered, lawnmowers are battery powered, I'm sure chainsaws not too far behind. And maybe other tools that we can suggest that will be banned in our township by twenty thirty.
Thank you. Counsel Cooper.
I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said here, but I do like the concept of sort of community oriented noise by law. And I think that was reinforced by Counsel Douglas and Counsel Hazleton in different ways. And and it it strikes me that there is an issue in Honey Harbor. And not just from what I've read, but also experience and and many calls I've had with the people. And I think it's it's actually not just. And I think it's it's actually not just geographic, but so it's very dense in Honey Harbor, but it's also um heavy equipment. And there's the real problem on the weekends, uh scraping across a barge with a front end loader or whatever, or it makes a huge amount of noise and it's it's very unpleasant. And if you start not only on Saturday, but then on Sunday as well, it's it's making for a pretty unpleasant environment. And so I think the heavy equipment issue is uh is 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 something we need to consider geographically. And on top of which, um so hand tools or or electric tools, et cetera, that's a different issue. And and I think people should be allowed to work on the weekends at their cottages. But but I'm really just saying that uh this heavy equipment i- issue is I've heard about it for for months and actually years. So I I'd support that uh wholeheartedly, and I think it could be instituted just by saying that the borders of the Hamlet of Honey Harbor, there would be this thus and so. There's also noise uh related to fireworks, and I have been speaking with people about this issue. I've heard uh from somebody that lives in the Hamlet of Honey Harbor, and they told me that you know, if I think back about uh having fireworks when I was a young lad, we had fireworks on the twenty fourth of May weekend and never again in the year. Not uh every weekend and and then every night of every weekend. And so I I think maybe from a township wide, not only is it a noise issue and a light issue, but it's a fire hazard as well, a serious fire hazard. So I would encourage that we might uh enact something or think about enacting something that dealt with maybe uh four times a year, long weekends that that you could have fireworks, but um not other than that. And and you could send in a complaint about somebody that's doing that. So I know it's not going to be easy to enforce, but um I I I think that's certainly worth considering. So I know it may sound like I'm straying, but I'm really trying to point out that that there's more than one kind of noise. And uh I think there are some ways that we might be able to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Douglas, you already had a turn. You have a quick addition before I go to Counsel Jarvis?
I do. I do. I have a very quick one, just based on what Counsel Cooper's saying. I I couldn't agree with them more. I I wasn't aware that there was large equipment going on in the more density areas or other areas. We don't certainly have it in our area that I'm aware of. But I I would agree with you on the fireworks, absolutely see it all the time on this lake, and it is such a fire hazard. I I just I'm shocked that we're allowing it. Um and the other thing is is I would be really happy to see some sort of quiet day Sundays, no no leaf blowing, no major equipment, no saws, no nothing. I mean, I I know people want to work on the weekend, but people also want to enjoy their docks on the weekend.
Thank you. Counsel Jarvis.
Yeah, actually, uh Counsel Douglas took the words out of my mouth with regards to a quiet Sunday. I thought, why don't why don't we try and institute that exactly that? I think it's a lovely idea. Um a little piece of quiet for everybody wouldn't hurt at all. Uh again, though, there are those that are only there on the weekend and need to apparently need to get a lot of work done. Uh where we are, there aren't so many issues as there are within Honey Harbor. I think it's already been noted. I tend to lean along the lines of whatever else has already been said, and fireworks are an issue, uh definitely. Even uh from where we are, uh you can see them a long way off, and you can hear them quite often as well. So yeah, fireworks, uh the construction concept and Counsel Reinkle's idea of trying to work on a long term uh banning of gas powered outdoor equipment of some sort sounds to me like a pretty appealing idea because it's also a reduction in our carbon footprint. So there is the environmental aspect on that as well. So I'm I'd be keen to to follow up on that one as well.
All right. Thank you. Counsel Reinkle, you want a quick word before I open my mouth?
Well, I'd say I I I think a resolution to council about this is quite uh about banning these power tools. But you can also they also have a noiseless firecrackers, uh fireworks. And so you can maybe ban um noisy fireworks by 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 twenty thirty and only noiseless uh one after that. So they're out there, they're out there, it's not that popular.
Well, then you have light pollution.
Dare dare I say I've never heard of noiseless fireworks?
Hey, how about noiseless counselors?
Why are you trying to shut me up, Counsel Cooper? I I I think th- this one's a very interesting one because um I think a fair number of us come to enjoy the township for some peace and quiet, even if we don't always achieve it. I I and I, you know, I've listened to a number of people, not only in the last few weeks, but over the, I'll say this summer, talking, having noise complaints. And and I, in my mind, they fall into a few broad categories. The one category are the weekend rentals. And if you're near a weekend rental, that means every weekend there's a new group there, and they are celebrating that they're out of the city for that weekend, and they are happy, and I'm happy for them, but they're sure as heck not considering their neighbors. I think that's one category, and 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 I know we're going to be talking about short term rentals later on. Um but I think and I also think fireworks, I'm all in board of us restricting when you can have fireworks. With the great proviso, of course, even if we allow them certain weekends, that's only if the chief, the fire chief says that uh the ground's damp enough to absorb them. Um like if there's a fire ban, you're not doing your fireworks. Because I I I get a little tired of that peaceful evening, you're hearing the loon call, and all of a sudden there is these bright things being shot off from the bay around the corner. My experience is that most people that I know of in our area who have or decide on a weekend to have parties are pretty good about shutting down around eleven o'clock. Or if they want to go on longer, they invite every single neighbor to their party. Um and they're and you they can get away with it once a year or so. I also, I but I think the people who are the most upset aren't the ones who have a neighbor who's doing a bit of contracting work or construction now and then to improve their cottage. It's when it's persistent. Every weekend they're there, and every weekend that neighbor or that contractor or who have you is making noise so they can't get away from it. I mean, I think we all allow exceptions, but it when you when you're in a location where you have a neighbor who's a let me call it a hobbyist, making a heck of a lot of noise all the time. I still I still understand the one cottage or near out in my place who feels like they have to get out the leaf blower every Sunday morning regardless. And I'm thinking, why? Anyway, uh I I'm all in board with us creating more restrictions, though allowing the fact that, you know, there there are going to be exceptions. Um and and we should all, but no matter what we put in, we know it's going to be enforced on a complaint basis. And the trouble is when that person's making noise at midnight, who the heck's going to come out? The bylaw officers aren't going to come out. The OPP are probably parked their boat already for the for the day. Um and you know, and they're going to ask, is any life in danger? You say no, and and they're going to say, okay, uh you know, send us in the details and it's so it's it's a tough one. But I I do think uh much like the 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 prior uh lights uh lighting issue, we we have to respect the fact that people should be allowed to in en- enjoy the quiet pleasures of their home, their cottage. And 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 you know, we we can't quite say, well, it don't let any noise get past your boundaries the way we we can talk a little bit about with the lights. But I think we we the 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 issue comes down to a few people who are persistent or a few locations that are persistent in in I'd say three quarters of the time. And and um I think we have to create a bylaw, which means that if somebody gives up gives our bylaw officers a complaint, they can go to the particular location or the particular homeowner and say, here's the law, and you've been breaking it. And and you know, people have been complaining. And and we know that three quarters of the time just that extra education works, thankfully. Um but we also have to have something in place for those who have no respect for their neighbors. Counsel Hazelton?
I just wanted to uh highlight something uh that um you know, you you made a comment about the uh the dark sky lighting and uh you know, having light you know, be visible beyond a particular property. There are communities who have uh established noise bylaws and say things like you can't have noise, it's audible twenty five feet from the property line or fifty meters from the property line. And although on one hand, one might 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 say, well, that's that's a silly thing, and how are you going to enforce it? But to some degree, when you set a bylaw in place, you are setting an expectation of behavior. And hopefully, you've written the bylaw in a way that it has teeth, that you can enforce it uh where it is a continued violation. Um and so uh on one hand, I don't want to make it a uh a headache for the bylaw enforcement to enforce these things. But at this, we I also think we have to be aware that common sense isn't all that common. And uh there's a lot of people who uh just don't have it, and they need to be told. So we were talking with the darks are lighting, we need an education process. Well, on the noise side of things, maybe we need an education process, but I also think we need a framework that allows uh those who choose to not uh be reasonable people that we can, you know, bring in enforcement and bring some sanity to it. And maybe they're not going to get fined the first time, not likely. Uh multiple offenders, those are the problem people. But if you don't have the laws in place to control it, then you end up with chaos. And uh you know, we have one of the fellows that uh wrote in. Uh I had a conversation with him, and his comment to me was, I went to my neighbor trying to be civil and request that he toned it down and, you know, not crank up the volume so much. And neighbor basically said, uh you come back over here and I'll take you out. So I mean, we, this is not a reasonable person. But there's no, there there's nothing we have in place that allows that resident of ours to be able to enjoy his property when he has a neighbor that is has no common sense. And so I would ask uh that as we go about trying to craft these new bylaws, that we think about this as we're creating a framework of common sense of what you should be doing and making noise till eleven o'clock at night, every night, every day of the week. That's not common sense, making noise till maybe seven or eight o'clock every day of the week, maybe that's okay. Uh and if somebody does it till eleven o'clock, one or two nights a week, that's not a big deal. If you know, you're not likely going to complain if they do one night. But we need to establish some sort of a framework and then communicate it. And that's what I would seek uh our staff to do when they come back with these uh updated bylaws recommendations is that they think about this as a framework to help people understand what common sense should be. Thank you.
All right. Chief Undom.
So I know my staff is very uh rehearsed with some of this stuff, and we've done a number of public, I'm going to call it public education sessions with violators, and we've had, I'm going to say, some very good success with that. I can tell you that, yes, there are I don't want to call them one offs, but there are uh a group that we don't have very good success with. But that being said, that our bylaw was reviewed by a prosecutor in two thousand and eighteen because of these issues that we ran into then. And as uh Mr. Dre has done on numerous times for us is that when we look to add something into our bylaw, I'd have him review it now and what is going to be for what's going to be enforced that we can be able to do something and what's not. And that plays a huge part in uh what we bring forward to council is uh if we we're we've we're putting the bylaw in place to deal with these people that refuse to abide by the rules. And when the prosecutor tells me uh that we're not going to have this success to prosecute that, that puts us in a very bad situation that I there is no winning for us. And um so anything we bring forward, I I'll run past them again. Um I'm taking all of your comments, and I will sit down with Karina uh tomorrow. If you have anything else that you think of in the next uh bit, please email it through Jessica, and she'll make sure that the message gets to me, and I will look at it. As for fireworks, we brought that forward a few years back. There was no appetite for it. Obviously, there is an appetite from this council, so we'll bring something forward on fireworks uh in the future for sure.
Thank you very much. Counsel Cooper, followed by Counsel Douglas. We want to end this fairly quickly.
Yes, I understand, and thank you, Mayor Kritzer. And and thank you, Tony, for your comments. And I I guess just in terms of enforcement and and taking somebody to court, I completely understand what you're getting at. Does it work that way? In other words, are you going to be successful? But another point is that even if it won't be terribly successful in court, it sets the tone for the community. If we say these things and we put it in our bylaws, even if we lose in court, most people are going to be good enough to pay attention to the rules. Canadians are pretty good at that, and look at how well we're vaccinated. So I think um I I think that that plays a role as well, if you don't mind me saying that uh even if we can enforce, let's uh let's at least try. Thank you.
Counsel Douglas.
Thank you. Um just a quick one on uh this quiet Sunday that I brought up and and obviously anyways, um I wonder, Tony, if you could check to see if that's even a possibility, like if that's possible to have some bylaw put in place for. I don't know if there's an appetite for it with council, but uh I'd like to hear the loons on Sunday rather than the leaf blowers. Um I'm I'm just wondering if you could maybe check with Legal to find out in case we do have an appetite for that, if we could get a a bylaw in place for Sundays being quiet, no leaf blowing or large equipment.
I I will definitely look into it. I know of uh some other municipalities have changed it. And to Counselor Hazelton's point about Grand Bend and some of the other areas that they've got different things, when we've talked to them, we've talked about the enforcement and the prosecution. Uh and some of that's not been very successful. So we kind of take that that you might think we're not looking here and not looking there. Uh we have, we have done some research with it. It's just, it goes back to that. So but I here he is, I will sit down with Karina to uh tomorrow and have a lengthy discussion and see where we can bring some of this stuff to.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking all our input and your uh understanding of what council has to say. Unfortunately, Counsel Bocheck, we've we've lost him, so we didn't get his input. But I think that uh we'll we look forward to um what information you bring back to us in a subsequent meeting. So I think at this point, we don't need a resolution because we're just basically re- responding to the initial report and asking for something more. As way, I don't think we have any new business at this point on this particular agenda. So I now have, excuse me, moved by Counsel Reinkle, second by Counsel Cooper, be resolved that committee of the whole that does now adjourn at four fifty nine PM to be reconvene on December fourteenth, twenty twenty one, or at the call of the chair. All those in favor? And that is carried. Now, we still have to finish off our our planning council meeting. Do we have to sign in and out for that or?
We are, we are out of Zoom links for the day, which is so we're not going to go through the hassle of making a new one.
Okay.
Save everyone that hassle. We are all here, uh but we do need a resolution to reconvene.
Moved by Counsel Hazelton, second by Counsel Jarvis, that we reconvene our um planning council meeting. Although, sorry?
At five.
At five o'clock. PM. All those in favor? Okay, we are reconvened. We are now in planning council. And I believe we skipped over the consent agenda. And so I now have to get a news back to my resolutions. I have a different stack here.
It's page eighteen.
I was already as far as seventeen. I was already, as far as seventeen, I was getting close. What I have here is moved by Counselor Douglas, second by Counselor Jarvis, we resolve the council adopt the consent agenda of November ninth, twenty twenty-one. As presented. Any items that anybody would like to read? Hold, Counselor Hazelton.
Item B.
Item B, that's the minutes of October twelfth. Okay.
Sorry, here's the other option is we could have a discussion and then if it's still just to be received, we can receive them afterwards.
Because in the other item we have that's not on the agenda, because we had it later is item F, which was the MZO of the Segwin.
Correct, which has a separate resolution. So I was going to suggest that I am seven B, C, D, and E be received for the consent, consent agenda and then deal with seven F separately.
Okay.
I'm not sure what Counselor Hazelton's.
Concern with item B.
Thank you, America, it's here. Um, I don't want to be uh, too picky here, but um, uh, I did want to uh, highlight that uh, in item E nine E, uh, where we were talking about the draft meeting calendar. That uh, at that meeting, we, we had provided direction to staff to pull the planning committee for a suitable day to meet. And uh, that uh, wasn't recorded. I just thought uh, for consistency and accuracy, it should be recorded.
Um, well, nine E specifically says members discussed a review of dates and to consult with committee members as applicable.
Okay.
And the item was deferred.
Anyways, yeah.
All right. We'll try again. And be it resolve the council adopt the consent agenda of November ninth, twenty twenty-one. Including items B, C, D, and E as presented. All those in favor. If that is carried. And then we have Okay.
You don't have a piece of paper for it, but I do have a draft.
Why I can't find it. Um, and, and I'll just speak to this item briefly. Um, I know that uh, our CEO circulated some correspondence we received on this. And I also spoke yesterday with her worship Ann McDermott, the mayor of the township of Segwin. And um, her explanation to me, which I think is important for you to understand is that this is land in the northwest corner of Segwin, which is immediately south of Perry Sound. If you're um, if you go to the, if everybody knows where the Canadian Tire is in Perry Sound. If you just drove south from there, you would very quickly find yourself in Segwin. And that whole area, um, there, there is a, a number of proposal or number of discussions taking place about developing um, affordable, assess, accessible, whatever you call it, housing, low, lower cost housing in that area. And um, so they wanted to, to make a zoning change to allow those discussions to continue. Um, but part of the challenge they have is that they are in the midst of a official plan and zoning bylaw review, which probably won't be completed for another two years. And they don't want to postpone those discussions for two years. And therefore, they've asked the minister for an MZO to allow that zoning to be changed uh, in the next couple of months. Um, I think it's very important to note that they are absolutely not trying to sidestep any um, environmental reviews or, or concerns. The, the township of Segwin is quite sensitive to that. And there are some wetlands in this in this area. So they definitely want those protected. They're simply wanting, they're simply asking for the MZO in order to, for, for, I'll call it for timing. Reasons. They want to get the zoning approved quickly. And, and their internal system, because they're going through this official plan review and everything, they wouldn't be able to do it as quickly. And, and, and therefore that, that is the main purpose according to their worship, that they're asking for this request. And the minister is, is, is open to it, but wanted them to provide um, uh, agreement, if you will, or support from the neighboring municipalities. And we're one of the neighboring municipalities, even though it's nowhere near our borders, the lands that are being considered. So that, that's my quick background. Counselor Cooper.
Uh, thank you for that. And you filled in a lot of the questions I had, including environmental protection, but also I'm a great supporter of affordable housing. So I, I'm all in, in a, in a sense. I just wanted to understand. There was one sort of part of the report that I uh, wasn't too sure about. And that is that the town of, or I think it's a town, town of Perry Sound. Uh, there seemed to be some sort of uh, non-support there, or is it a technical issue? I just wanted to understand that. Did I not read something about that?
Um, yeah, I, I don't, I, I hope I'm not talking out of turn, but my understanding was that at one time there was discussion about Perry Sound, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, bringing those lands into Perry Sound. Um, I'm, I'm missing a planning word, but you know what I mean. They wanted to acquire. Thank you. That's exactly the word I was looking for. Annexing those lands. And that has not taken place. And so there, there's a possibility that Perry Sound will express a certain shall I say disappointment, that this, this development could happen in Segwin as opposed to in Perry Sound. Having said that, any development here will be a great asset to Perry Sound in that most of those residents will be um, shopping and using the facilities of Perry Sound itself. Um, and there is apparently some very preliminary discussion that these developments might actually utilize the water and sewage services of Perry Sound. They're, they're, they're looking at that versus setting up some sort of, I'll call it micro system um, for the new development. But that's all very preliminary, from what I understand.
Thank you for that clarification and I feel very good about it. Thank you.
Counselor Hazelton.
Um, I see that uh, our planner, Dr. Chris Spillit is still with us. Um, are you still there, Chris, or? So I, I would like to ask you a question, if I could, that relates to this request. Um, we're hearing that they want this MZO order. Um, because they don't think they can get planning and bylaw changes put in place. Um, if, if an organization, if sorry, if a township is going through a zoning bylaw review or an OP uh, review. Does that uh, suspend any zoning bylaw uh, passing and any OP uh, passing during that review period?
Were you miss, uh, through the, the, pardon me, through your worship. It's been a long day. To Counselor Hazelton, uh, no, it doesn't, uh, they could still go through uh, a zoning bylaw.
Okay, so based on what you just said, um, and based on the fact that Perry Sound is not supportive of this. Um, I can't see myself supporting this. Um, if, if the direct neighboring community is not in favor. And uh, if there are paths that could be taken to expedite this, I, I'm hearing and I'm fearful that uh, they're just whining about the fact that they're going through this OP and zoning bylaw change, but in fact, uh, they could expeditiously approve the needed zoning bylaw and OP uh, changes needed to do whatever they need to do. And why would they then go to a ministerial uh, zoning order? Uh, I, I, I smell a rat here. Maybe I'm missing something, or maybe I'm uh, being uh, too suspicious, but uh, I, I'm not uh, seeing this as a clean.
Excuse me, Counselor Cooper, you're not muted. Thank you. Sorry, Counselor Hazelton.
It's okay. I was done. I was just saying, I, 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 there's too many things that just don't make sense here in their ask. That uh, I, I can't see why we would support it.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yeah, I appreciate comments both uh, from you, Mr. Mayor, and particularly from Counselor Hazelton. Uh, and initially I was of the same vein as Counselor Hazelton. In uh, I, I'm very suspicious of MZOs right off the bat. We're, we are all trying to trying to curb the practice that the provinces brought into place where MZOs just to be, seem to be thrown around all over the place. And then we have this one come up, which from, from what you said is probably a pretty honest uh, request of the province. However, if our director of planning indicates, as he has, that the Segwin can uh, proceed through normal channels on this, I think they should be seeking to do that as opposed to seeking an MZO which sort of undermines, I think, all municipalities uh, intent in trying to curb the use of these things. Thank you.
I, I think I should clarify that in, in a few weeks' time, the council, the council of Segwin will be passing a resolution, making the application to the um, the, the province. So this is not trying to get around the local council. Just, I think that has to be pointed out.
Thank you. I think it's just, I, it's more like getting around the processes, sort of how I'm looking at it, not the council.
Yeah, there, there, there's no question. They're trying to speed up this process of, of getting the, the, the zoning. And I don't pretend to know the whole story. I'm sorry. Any other comments? Ms. Wade, you, you crafted up a resolution for us to consider? I think we should see that before we um, and, and possibly edit it before we make a vote.
Oh, can you see my screen okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Now, the only one, one thing I'm wondering in whether or not this would satisfy the council or not, is that based on the communication I've received, both verbally and, and written, whether or not we add a sentence or something along the lines of saying, uh, under the um, assumption that no environmental um, studies are precluded or something to that effect, that, that uh, environmental safeguards will be um, I'm not sure of the exact wording, maybe Dr. Spillik can assist, but um, that, that this support uh, is based on, or is of course, it is based on the um, expectation that uh, the township of Segwin will diligently uh, include uh, or all appropriate environmental review, something to that effect. Dr. Spilla.
I'm, I'm, I'm just uh, thinking on my feet here, uh, your worship.
Well, you're ahead of me because I'm thinking on my butt when I'm.
Well, yeah, I guess technically I am thinking on my butt. Okay, there, there, there's, there's the soundbite. The township of Segwin will satisfy any environmental there, there, the township of Segwin will conduct any studies to address any environmental concerns. How does that, how does that read? As- associated with the proposed development.
I, you know, personally, I think something like this is very important because of part of the, the messaging in my mind is that we don't want, we want the province to understand that our support is conditional on these environmental concerns being addressed, whatever they may be. Counselor Cooper, follow the Counselor Hazelton.
I think this is a, a good addition and, and I um, I remind us that um, I think typically these M, whatever they are, MZOs are uh, something that um, are questionable practice in some cases. Um, but I, I do have a couple of thoughts. And one is that uh, in terms of affordable housing, this is an important initiative. Uh, I'm hopeful that uh, Segwin will work well together with the township of, or with the town of Perry Sound. Um, the only other thing, observation I have is that generally speaking, uh, and this is sort of just an opinion, but Segwin has generally had a very good reputation from an environmental and being environmental perspective and being progressive. So just, just a comment. Thank you.
Counselor Wanko, did I see your hand? No, okay. Um, Counselor Hazelton, I believe I saw your hand.
Yeah, I, I, I think the resolution helps us get to a better place, but I'm still not comfortable that um, we're being given the straight goods by Segwin. Um, I mean, if, if uh, first of all, we're being told that they can't do the bylaws, uh, and OP changes, and yet uh, our director of planning uh, says, well, that's certainly possible. Um, so now I have to ask the question somewhat rhetorically of, well, if, if they can, why don't they? Uh, what is the need for uh, an MZO? Um, and uh, and, and that's not all forthcoming. We probably can't get it in today's meeting. Uh, and they seem to be on some path of uh, ultra sense of urgency and uh, I just think there's a lot of unknowns here. I'm still uncomfortable. If you have watched too, too many nasty movies about nefarious things that go on, but I, I'm still uncomfortable with what I'm hearing. It doesn't seem like it's all above board.
CEO Gunby.
Thank you. I, I have to agree with uh, member Hazelton. I'm not a fan of these MZOs whatsoever. But um, I did have conversation with our new uh, director doctor. And um, have, we were talking about the difference between the township supporting and the township not objecting. So I'm not sure if that slight word change would help.
Okay. Wow, we got a thumbs up from um, not yet Dr. Hazelton.
Yeah, I could go, I could go with that as well.
Ms. Wade, could you bring that, the words up again, please? Yeah.
I can't see your mouse, but both other places where it says support, remove that.
Second paragraph, yes.
Karen, can you put the word and right after the last word development in the second paragraph? So it ties in with the second that.
This is
Thank you.
You can put, sorry to keep doing this, after that letter, just put that a letter of no objection. I'm trying to take other notes at the same time, guys. Perfect.
I, 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 I think this has definitely been improved, this resolution with our discussion. Any other comment from any counselor? And I'm going to ask you to speak up just because I can't see all of you right now, if you have any other comments. So I'm going to say.
It's Chris here. I just want to add one thing, just for the record. Uh, in, in my opinion, as a registered professional planner, uh, the zoning bylaw amendment route is, is my preference for how municipalities should typically implement land use controls and uh, and, and indicate any specific requirements for any development. Uh, so the MZO i- is a, is a much stronger option. So the MZO is, is a, is a much stronger option.
I, 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 I'm wondering if we can give direction to Madam CAO that she speak to her equivalent in Segwin, just to confirm why they're doing this before we craft and draft and send off this letter.
I can do that for sure.
To just, because I, I, I think councillor Hazelton raises a legitimate concern, and I will admit that I did not get a full answer, not because I think anything was being hidden, just because the conversation wasn't lengthy enough to get into more of the detail. In the meantime, I'll say, sorry, councillor Jarvis, was that your hand going up?
That was my thumb going up.
Oh, okay. So I'm going to say moved by councillor Jarvis, second by councillor Douglas. Be it resolved, the council does not object to the township of Segwin's request for minister's zoning order to establish the principle of residential development on the lands in northwest portion of their township, which would provide their community with housing that is diverse and unit type and at attainable price points. And that this is based on the expectation, the township of Segwin will conduct any studies to address any environmental concerns associated with the proposed development. And that a letter of no objection be sent to the, by the mayor on behalf of the council of the township of Georgian Bay to be circulated to the township of Segwin, MP Scott Herson, MPP Norm Miller. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. So now we've gone past consent, we've gone past closed, and now we had a couple bylaws, bylaw and a confirming bylaw to consider. We're getting close to the end, colleagues. Okay, this is a license of occupation by law. Madam Clerk, can you explain?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a pre-existing license of occupation that has existed from nineteen ninety-seven, if my memory is correct. That was just for a shed that overhangs part of the road allowance, and some wider road allowance. And most of the houses along that way kind of, the front yard is assumed as part of that landscaping. And recently they went to the committee of adjustment for an application that was approved pending particular requirements, one of which is to obtain an updated license of occupation that also includes a garden shed that has subsequently been built over top of our road allowance. So this is really just updating an existing license of occupation, but that one was passed via bylaw, so this one will also need to be passed via bylaw.
And if memory serves, th- these buildings were on a lawn maintained by the residents nowhere near the road per se, but technically it was part of the road allowance, because the road allowance is much wider than the road itself.
That is correct, yes.
All right. Thank you for the confirming my memory. Council, any discussion? Councillor Jarvis?
A license of occupation would have to be renewed annually, or is it renewed indefinitely, or how does that work?
Um, there's annual requirements such as insurance and fees and that type of thing. But it's continued indefinitely until either us or them choose to terminate. So if they decided they didn't need to occupy the space anymore and toward the structures, then we can remove the license of occupation if we decided we needed that space for some reason, and we're going to expand the road or whatever, and so we needed to utilize the land in which we own, then we would provide notice and terminate their license of occupation.
Thank you. The second question would be, is there any way of agreeing to sell a portion of our road allowance to them, so we don't have to deal with this?
If they choose.
We could do that, could we?
We, in theory, and in most cases, we could, not in all cases, but in some cases, we could sell versus doing a license of occupation, but sometimes that's.
Yeah, I think that should be investigated, but yeah, okay.
Councillor Hazelton?
Yeah, I'm intrigued with some of the language of this, such as, I'm bridging from what councillor Jarvis was saying. It says here, such license shall be for life of the single family residence located in the adjacent lot. I didn't see other language that allows us to cancel it, but I'll accept that there is that in there. What I really wanted to focus on was item I, where it says to leave the lands in substantially the same commission, condition. And just being a little perhaps overly focused on septic system. Typically, if they have a septic system that's on that land, as they apparently do, there is a potential for the remediation of the, the lands that the septic system drainage bed is, is on. And I don't know if item I fully covers it, maybe it needs to be a bit more explicit, but this isn't a normal, you know, they're occupying lands. This is a septic bed on that land, and we may want to be more explicit about it, just a thought.
And that's partially why the schedule, the, the actual agreement is still listed as draft, because there are some tweaks like that, as this isn't a regular license of occupation. It's not as straightforward as some of them are, yeah. But generally, we're asking them not to damage lands. Don't make it worse. Don't make us have to fix it or clean it up, that kind of thing, right? That's the intent of that clause.
All right, any other questions? The resolution I have in front of me is moved by councillor Cooper, same by councillor Jarvis. Be it resolved, the council next by law twenty twenty-one zero seventy-five to authorize a license, sorry?
Seventy-four now, sorry.
Well.
Because we didn't pass a bylaw earlier today.
Twenty twenty-one dash zero seven four to authorize a license of occupation for one eighty-eight Lodge Road. All those in favor? Was that a vote, councillor Jarvis, or a question?
Oh, a bit of both. I, sorry, this will come back to us again for another license of occupation next year, is that right?
No.
Oh. How, how does it get renewed then?
No, it doesn't, it, it doesn't get renewed. They have to pay like an annual fee, and they have to provide insurance.
And as you said, I've been worried about the wording one more time. There, there, we can revoke this at any time, is that correct?
Yes, like with, with due notice, yes.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, it's good for the life of the family. What's that mean?
Or their car, whichever comes first.
All those in favor? And that is carried. All right. Now I have moved by councillor Anko, second by councillor Douglas. Be it resolved, the planning council adopt by law twenty twenty-one dash zero seven five, probably, to confirm the proceedings of the November ninth, twenty twenty-one council meeting. All those in favor? And that is carried. And the very last page I have here is be it resolved, the planning council does now adjourn at five twenty-nine PM until December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at nine AM, or the call of the chair. All those in favor? We are adjourned after two days, or at least, at least.